Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. A full house. I think a majority of the folks are here for some awards to some pretty outstanding police officers here tonight, so we look forward to the presentation of those awards. Before we start, I'd like to make a couple comments tonight if you'll extend me that privilege. As many of you know already, early this morning, we lost a member of our community in a tragic incident. Our hearts go out to everyone involved, especially the family of the young man we lost. When tragedies like this occur, we often find ourselves trying to make sense of the situation. We find ourselves demanding simple answers to some of society's most complex problems. I ask for now that we come together and show compassion for the young man, his family, and the police officer involved. Each will need our support during this heartbreaking moment in our city. Earlier this week, we also lost another member of our community. Sadly, Rick Johnson passed away this week after battling cancer for some time. For those who knew Rick, you understand the gravity of this loss. He was not just a successful businessperson, he was also a shining example of what it means to be a community member. Rick served on many local boards and gave so much to countless causes. On so many occasions, he turned community pride into community action, and each of us is better because of Rick. Visitation for Rick will be this Wednesday from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. at William Sullivan and Son Funeral Home, and his funeral will be held there as well on May 17th, which is Thursday, at 11:00 a.m. if you choose to pass along your respects. So, thank you. With that, I'm going to call the May 14, 2018 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Gibbs, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Good evening, everyone. As we gather here together this evening, we extend a sincere prayer to the friends, family, neighbors, and the officer involved in the incident that happened early this morning. Such an event deeply hurts our community, and as a community, we must find a way to learn from this challenge and support each other. Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
So, up next, we have the presentation of Outstanding Customer Service Award, followed by the presentation of the Police Department Annual Awards.
Debbie Murray, come forward, please.
We do two customer service awards every quarter. This time, we had a little time issue with scheduling both recipients, so we did one at the last meeting and we're doing one at this meeting. The customer service award is presented by the customer-centric cultural team, from nominations that may come from the public or from coworkers. In this case, there were two nominations that both came from residents of Royal Oak, not from coworkers, and both relate to the home improvement program that Debbie works with using community development block grant money. First one was, "I want to thank you for all your help with my home improvements. You excel at customer service, and I appreciate your hard work." And the second one was, "Ms. Murray worked hard to help me be eligible for the low-income home improvement grant. My home is like brand new. I no longer have to stay awake at nights worrying about all the repairs my home needed. She was informative, kind, and always helpful." The customer-centric cultural team was very impressed by Debra offering such exceptional customer service to Royal Oak residents. "Thank you for your service, Debra," that's from the team, and from me, and from the mayor.
(inaudible)
You didn't know what great customer service comes with great responsibility. You are now the adoptive mother of Romy. Samuelson, actually, the name of your nice dog. Your appreciation for all your hard work. Thank you so much, Debra.
(applause)
Steph, drop one thing.
Oh, wait. The dog is so distracted.
This goes back to the department.
Community Development Department. You've got to ride it on the way out. That is something that came from the Disney training we did, because that was something that was adopted by Pixar many years ago. They actually used scooters to get around in the Pixar studios, and they started giving them out as awards. So, we've copied with -- it's not a new scooter. It rotates, but we've got two of them. One to the department of each of the employees receiving the award for that quarter.
We've had some logistical changes here that's going to screw me up. We figured your speeches are so great that you'd want to actually do a legitimate mic drop?
No.
So, chief, no doubt of you, we have this microphone here.
Mayor Eric City Commission, ladies and gentlemen, today we have our annual Police Department Awards. I'm very pleased this year we have a record number of officers receiving a life-saving award. It's something we're very proud of, and I'm going to go ahead and get started. We'll start with Sergeant Carly Wingard. On January 15, 2017, Sergeant Wingard responded to a serious injury accident on Woodward. When Sergeant Wingard arrived, one of the vehicles on fire -- one of the vehicles was on fire and the front seat passenger was trapped inside. Sergeant Wingard was unable to open the passenger door of the vehicle due to the amount of damage. With complete disregard for her own safety, Sergeant Wingard climbed through the driver's side of the car and pulled the injured passenger out. Consistent with the core values of the Police Department, Sergeant Wingard put the safety of others above her own and did not hesitate to protect those who could not protect themselves. And for her actions, I'm very pleased to award her bravery.
Sergeant Brown? On May 29, Sergeant Brown responded to a report of an occupied stolen vehicle. You know what? We're going to go ahead and -- sorry. Let's call up to make this a little quicker. Nate Hepner, Brian Buckley, Andrew Niedrowski, and Clement, and L. Rod. On May 29, 2017, Sergeant Brown and the officers responded to a report of an occupied stolen vehicle in the Myers parking lot. This individual had recently fled from Berkeley officers. Upon arrival, Sergeant Brown observed that the lone occupant of the vehicle was armed with a knife and was repeatedly and viciously stabbing himself in the leg. Despite the risk to himself, Sergeant Brown approached the vehicle, broke out the passenger window, and was able to disarm the subject by striking him in the hand with his baton. Sergeant Brown's quick action and quick thinking and brave actions undoubtedly saved this person's life, and I'm very happy to award him bravery.
(applause)
There is a same incident. Officers Hepner, Buckley, Niedrowski, Clement, and L. Rod approached from the outside of the vehicle and pulled
The subject out once Sergeant Brown had disarmed him. These officers observed that the subject was bleeding profusely from the many deep lacerations in his right thigh. Officers immediately began to render first aid and applied two tourniquets to the subject's leg as they continued to render aid until the subject was transported to the hospital. The officers worked as a team and were able to save the man's life. Without the application of the tourniquets, there's no doubt that this person would have bled out quickly. Their actions are consistent with the department's core values of service and compassion, and I'm very happy to award them a life-saving award.
Move out of order, so I'm probably going to screw this all up. Officer Gagliardi.
On January 14, 2017, Officer Gagliardi was on patrol near St. Mary's Church and was utilizing the thermal imaging device in the patrol car. He observed a subject in a remote corner of the church grounds tying a belt and a chain around his neck and around the other end around the upper portion of a tree. When Officer Gagliardi approached the subject, he told him -- the subject told Officer Gagliardi to get away because he wanted to kill himself. Officer Gagliardi was able to de-escalate the situation and was able to remove the chain from the subject's neck and get the subject safely transported to a hospital for treatment. Officer Gagliardi's proactive police work and calm, quick action saved this person's life, and I'm very pleased to award him a life-saving award.
Okay, we need Officer Buckley again. Officer Addis and Officer Niedrowski.
On September 25, 2017, Officers Buckley, Addis, and Niedrowski responded to a possible drug overdose where a male subject was not breathing. Upon arrival, officers located the subject on the sidewalk in front of the house, not breathing. Officer Buckley performed chest compressions while Officers Addis and Niedrowski prepared and administered two doses of Narcan. Within -- after the second dose, the subject began to breathe on his own. The subject was transported to the hospital where he fully recovered from his drug overdose. The quick action and teamwork displayed by these officers resulted in this person's life being saved, and I'm very pleased to award them a life-saving award. On November 17, 2017, Officers Endranos and Yurki were dispatched to Myers on a report of an employee not breathing. Officers arrived and determined the person did not have a pulse. Officers applied the AED and rotated, giving chest compressions while the AED continued evaluating the person. While they were performing CPR, the AED shocked the person four separate times. On the fourth shock, the person began breathing on his own. The subject was transported to Beaumont Hospital where he fully recovered. The quick actions and teamwork displayed by these officers saved this person's life, and I'm very happy to award you a life-saving award. Great job. On December 3, 2017, Officer Steers responded to a report of a suicidal subject threatening to jump onto the freeway. It was on the overpass. When Officer Steers arrived, the subject was sitting on top of the freeway barrier, ready to jump. While the subject was speaking to another officer, Officer Steers took the opportunity to approach the subject from the rear, grab him around the waist, and pull him off the wall. Officer Steers is obviously a big, strong, young man, but he could have very easily been pulled over the other side while attempting to save this person. His quick actions and tactics saved the distraught man's life, and we were able to get him the help he needed. I'm very happy to award him a life-saving award.
We have a unit citation for the day shift officers. How many day shift officers do we Who do we got? Any of them?
Yes.
Come on down. Come on.
(laughing)
Okay. This is actually a unit citation for the entire shift. On March 8, 2017, a severe windstorm hit Royal Oak with wind gusts of up to 70 miles an hour. I'm sure we all remember this day. The high winds caused power outages, fallen trees. Will you get down here?
(inaudible)
Fallen trees and structure fires. In total, day shift responded to 111 calls for service. Day shift officers, supervisors, and dispatchers did an outstanding job working as a team to prioritize calls, coordinate responses from police, fire, and DPS, and provide emergency services during this tumultuous situation. Day shift personnel demonstrated the core value of service by ensuring the highest level of service and a feeling of security for those we serve. Congratulations. Sergeant Anetta is a hard-working sergeant who comes to work every day with a great attitude. He can be counted on to handle his shift responsibilities by providing direction, support, and encouragement to his officers and the civilian staff. He consistently makes sound decisions and is a key figure ensuring the shift is successful. As the day shift supervisor, Sergeant Anetta's duties go well beyond his shift responsibilities. He oversees CAD, Clemis, the MDCs, Clear, LiveScan, 911, audio recording system, and even manages the pay sheets for the PEOs. These duties are critically important. They are also highly technical, and they are, quite frankly, very unexciting. Sergeant Anetta stays on top of these assignments with very little supervision. Sergeant Anetta does his job competently, professionally, and without complaint, and always maintains a friendly, affable disposition that makes working with him a pleasure, and I'm very pleased to award him a distinguished service award.
Okay, Detective Murray has been working in the Criminal Investigations Division since 2014. Through his time, Detective Murray has been a tremendous asset to the Police Department. His caring, diligent approach to investigations has had a positive impact on the citizens of this city. Detective Murray just doesn't do his job, but he connects with people on a personal level, particularly crime victims. I personally witnessed the tearful embrace he received from the father of a homicide victim. This parent had suffered a terrible loss and told me that Matt's caring and thoughtful nature made this horrible experience a little more tolerable for him. He is a role model for both detectives and officers and displays a commitment to the department's core values. And I'm very pleased to award him a distinguished service award. Going to go a little bit out of order, but Terry Murray is our Civilian Employee of the Year, and she also has the same last name as Matt, so you can figure that one out.
PSA Murray is one of our most experienced dispatchers and has trained
Almost all our new front desk personnel, including the new sergeants. I guess particularly the new sergeants, right? PSA Murray also helps her coworkers when needed and is the consummate team player, but she also does so much more. In the past year, she has fostered eight kittens. I think she found a home for six of them, right? Fostered a turtle that was left at McDonald's. Bottle-fed a litter of rabbits when their mother was killed that were ultimately released back to the wild. Helped officers capture a snake in a resident's home. Yes, and she fostered the snake also. And most recently, she found a ferret -- she fostered a ferret that was found on the roadway. Not only does she find a home for these stray animals and provide care when it's needed most, but she provides that care for the animals in her own home, on her own time, and at her and her family's own expense. The Royal Oak Police officers came across these animals on various calls for service. Officer Murray's willingness to help and foster these animals is also a tremendous asset to the officers and the Police Department because it's very difficult to find resources late at night or when we come across these things. I will say, I think every officer who was on the snake call was very happy to see you show up and deal with that.
We don't train for everything. These snakes aren't trained. So, I'm very happy to award you our Civilian of the Year.
No, wait. I'm sorry. I gave you the wrong one. That's our first-ever husband-and-wife duo for awards, so...
Very exciting stuff.
I kept mad up because I don't know if he's as happy about all those animals showing up at the houses. I have a unit citation for this Criminal Investigations Division, and then a meritorious service for Brett Nelson. How many do we have from there?
From 2015 to 2017, the Royal -- City of Royal Oak experienced numerous -- a number of home invasions in the south end of our city. During this two-year investigation, the members of the Criminal Investigation Division collected and received almost 200 pieces of evidence, as well as followed up on countless leads for these home invasions. Their hard work and attention to detail resulted in five different suspects being charged with 22 felonies. It's important to note that these were not all related. It wasn't like it was one crew. It was several different crews. Their perseverance and teamwork demonstrated by the Criminal Investigation Division brought to an end a string of home invasions that had victimized residents of Royal Oak. His annual report, which you'll receive shortly, shows you our home invasions are way down, and this is one of the key factors as we catch these people. In addition to the Criminal Investigations Division in general, I'd like to point out the efforts of Detective Brett Nelson, who went above and beyond by reading through all the notes and reports, condensing them, the hundreds of pages, into a clear, concise outline that was presented to the prosecutor's office for prosecution. He was the lead on that, and so we have a unit citation for the Criminal Investigations Division and a meritorious service award for Brett Nelson. So, great job, Matt.
When they just give you a blank envelope, I've got to start doing that. So, we made -- these are all out of order, so we'll get them to you in a minute, all right?
The Royal Oak Police Department, several years ago, added our own internal customer service award. We wanted -- we recognize the brave and things the officers do, but customer service is a big part of our -- what we do and what we strive to have our officers go out and do. So, the last couple of years, we've issued an annual customer service award, and this year, it goes to Officer Steinke. At 6'5" and 270 pounds, Officer Steinke strikes an imposing and, quite frankly, intimidating presence. However, it takes just a few seconds of interaction with him to know he's a lot more than just a big guy. He demonstrates the perfect balance of both professionalism and -- of being both professional and personable. Officer Steinke strives to interact positively with all members of our community, including the people he arrests. Officer Steinke also regularly volunteers to do school tours for the Royal Oak Police Department, and when you see him interact with young adults and kids in particular, he's really got a gift for that. He exhibits the Royal Oak Police Department's core values of service and compassion. One example of Officer Steinke going the extra mile occurred in May. Police Department is often called to help residents with what would be non-traditional law enforcement activities. In this instance, an elderly resident called because her daughter -- her dog, I'm sorry, her dog was in medical distress and she could not lift a large animal into her car. It wasn't a problem for Officer Steinke, and he went there, and while at the scene, he learned that the dog needed to be put down. It goes without saying that this was in a very emotional time for her. Officer Steinke immediately recognized this and took time to help console her. Officer Steinke was concerned for her well-being and stopped by the next day to check on her. He even brought a sympathy card that was signed by all the shift officers. I received a letter from this sweet woman, and I can -- had to express her extreme gratitude, and quite frankly, if you read it and it doesn't put a tear in your eye, you don't have a soul. He really made a big difference with this small gesture in this woman's life. And for that, I'm very happy to award him our customer service award.
Okay, our final award today is for Sergeant Swakowski.
Sergeant Swakowski is our Police Officer of the Year. Since June of 2015, Sergeant Swakowski has been assigned to the Criminal Investigation Division as a supervisor. During that time, he has made a tremendous impact on the personnel and investigative capabilities of the division in the furtherance of the department's mission. Over the course of his assignment, Sergeant Swakowski has overseen critical investigations where his experience and knowledge has proved essential. In 2016, two homicide investigations, weeks apart, presented a great challenge to the Bureau. With a staff of investigators, half of which had three years or less of experience, his direct action resulted in both cases being thoroughly investigated and the suspects charged. Sergeant Swakowski consistently mentors and improves and provides guidance to the officers and detectives assigned to the Bureau and elsewhere in the department. Demonstrated through the results of the investigation of his subordinates, he has provided advice and direction on multiple unusual cases seldom seen in Royal Oak. From the drive-by shooting at Hookah Joe's to the arrest of the home-invasion suspect who had planned to kidnap his ex-girlfriend after breaking into her home, Sergeant Swakowski's extensive knowledge and experience proved greatly beneficial to the success of these investigations. Sergeant Swakowski is a proven leader in matters related to investigations and general police work. Whether it's through teaching civilians during the Citizen Police Academy or instructing department personnel during annual training, he is consistently called upon for his knowledge and expertise. Sergeant Swakowski is both respected by his supervisors -- is respected by his supervisors for his input and opinion, but consistently sought out by his peers and subordinates for knowledge ranging from investigation to personnel -- personal issues. These qualities make Sergeant Swakowski the consummate professional in teamwork, leadership, and a quality role model for the members of the Police Department, and I'm very pleased to award him our Officer of the Year.
I'd just like to add, every year we do this. It brings an incredible moment of pride for our community and for this commission up here. We have so many brave men and women serving in our Police Department, and courageously, they make a difference in our community keeping Don's reminding me on how to mayor, so I didn't get a chance to say it. So, how about one last round for all of the police officers here that were -- that received amazing awards tonight? Again, amazing job, guys. You deserve all the credit in the world for the work that you do, and we're so incredibly proud to have you in our police force. Thank you so much. And thank you again to the families who, you know, have to deal with your absences and worries and concerns, and, you know, it takes a whole group here. All right. This brings us to item number six on the agenda tonight, which is public comment. We do -- prior to public comment, Mr. Lavasser -- or Commissioner Lavasser is going to make a quick statement on an announcement for Carol Hennessy. She couldn't make it here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may have known, Carol Hennessy, she is active with the Royal Oak Memorial Society. And one of the things, one of the services the Memorial Society provides annually is to help clean the grave sites of many of our veterans over at the Oakview Cemetery. This has become quite a tradition for the Memorial Society. The Memorial Society will be meeting at the Oakview Cemetery this Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock, running until about 12:30 or so, to help clean grave sites for our veterans. Most of the grave markers are flushed to the ground, and they're very easily covered with dirt and turf, and so you may have veterans who served our country with honor whose last resting place may be covered, may not be viewable unless we go in there and clean it up. It's a tremendous thing that they do. It's something that can give you a great amount of pride if you do this, you volunteer. And again, they're doing this this Saturday, 10 o'clock, at the Oakview Cemetery. Some of the things to bring -- they'll provide trash bags, but bringing some cutting utensils to cut the turf around the grave sites, as well as perhaps some water and rags to rinse and wipe down the grave markers. It's a tremendous way to say thank you.
It's a tremendous way to say thank you to those that served us so, so well, in preserving our, our freedoms here in, in our country.
Thank you, Commissioner Lavasser. Alright, now it brings us to the opening of public comment. The City Commission does value and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now's the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. I ask that comments be directed to the Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be one public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the Edo Ramen House request to transfer a liquor license, you can wait to the public hearing when we open up that. You'll have an opportunity to speak, and of course, the same rules apply as to this public comment. If you wish to speak tonight, either at public comment or at the public hearing, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, we do ask that you state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak, so comments are limited to three minutes or less. And there's a timer right there at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, please don't hesitate at any time to email or call the City Commission with any of your comments. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address those questions when the agenda topic does come up. Or if it's not on the agenda, we'll refer it to our City Manager, where I also witness him taking very detailed notes and following up with residents accordingly. So, with that, who's first? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and fellow residents, my name is Michael Golden, and I live at 4147 Normandy, here in Royal Oak. We're asking for a, a sign to go on Normandy between Greenfield and Woodward, because we have a lot of trucks, a lot of big trucks coming through there. And the trucks are usually coming up Greenfield and going across Normandy to get to the industrial area over there where the steel factory is. These are big trucks, and they're heavy trucks. And here's an example of one that I caught on Normandy last year, and you can tell from the cab, the size of the cab, that it has housing in it for the driver. So, this is an interstate truck, and they cover tremendous distances. And a vehicle like this is going to only mess up the highway more than it already is. It's also an actual safety issue when it comes to children. These trucks just can't stop in a short distance in case some kid runs out into the, into the street. We're going to present this to the Traffic Committee next Tuesday, and get the issue put officially onto the agenda, hopefully. And I want to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Who's next this evening? Mr. London.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, David London, 5132 Thorncroft Court. I'm here on behalf of the Royal Oak Memorial Day Parade Committee. I'd like to extend an invitation to everyone to attend the Royal Oak Memorial Day Parade, which is May 28th at 9:00 a.m. It's going to be on Main Street. We have a great parade planned this year, and the ceremony afterward. Some new features and some, some old hits. The ceremony is going to be held immediately after, at 10:15. We have live music, obviously the replaying, a formal 21-gun salute, and honor guard performing taps, along with the, the Royal Oak High School Band. All are welcome at the parade, and our intention this year is to create a day, really bring you back to why we're here in the first place, which is to memorialize those who gave their lives to their country, and, and to make this as inclusive, positive, uplifting, and honorable as possible. We would like to remind everyone that's attending, especially politicians, that there is no leaf-leafing, and because of safety, we're not having, we're not allowing candy this year, because sometimes when people throw it out, children run out into traffic, and there have been incidents in the past in other cities, and we'd like to avoid that here. But I would like to invite everybody to attend, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. London. Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to also remind everybody that on, on that date, the Historical Society will be serving pancakes at the farmer's market before, during, and after the parade in service.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Harrison?
I'm here because of what occurred at the zoning board last week. I'm concerned about how the zoning board process is being handled. There used to be a recommendation from planning for each variance request. There was none this time. And microblading, last week, as I say, microblading was given a variance for four stations, when they only asked for one, in what was the American Apparel Building on the corner of Fourth and Washington. I have known the building next door, so usually I'm up here kind of supporting everybody else, but this time my ox is getting gored. Microblading is licensed under tattooing by state law. So, when they give the variance, it's not just for microblading, it includes tattooing. And the way the variance was given, it was listed as for microblading. Even one of the members of the zoning board suggested that they include in the variance language that precluded tattooing but allowed microblading, and it was ignored. Tattooing is one of five prohibited uses in the Central Business District. Remember, a variance runs with the land. Once you get it, it's there, runs with the land. And there was no discussion of hardship, and hardship is the primary criteria for obtaining a variance. Also, there was no input, not a word, from the City Attorney's Office representative. My concerns are, will we see tattooing next? What protections can we expect regarding the other four prohibited uses, which are adult-oriented commercial enterprises, escort services or escort agencies, pawn, pawnbrokers or pawn shops, and massage parlors or massage establishments? One of the members of the board even stated that massage parlors aren't what they used to be. We know what they used to be. And I'm not sure I agree with that. And he further commented that he would go to a massage, for a massage before going to a chiropractor. What kind of a signal is this sending to the massage parlor operators? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Lawrence Elkus, 30833 Northwestern Highway, Suite 204, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 8334. I was before the City, this council in December, December 18th, objecting to the learner parking license that is for the No Advertising, K-N-O-W. I sent a letter to the mayor and City Manager, as well as the rest of the council, January 12, 2018, and April 26, 2018. I sent another email requesting an update. I understand from your comments that this is a one-way communication to provide an update. I'd appreciate it.
And just, just so you know, we do run all legal documents and positions through our City Attorney's Office, so. Okay, who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Lynn Gatz, 169 West Clarkston Road, out of Lake Orion. I am from Denaskis Consulting and Development. Our firm works with governments, both at the local level as well as the state legislature, relative to government solutions. Many times on behalf of businesses that are interested in various areas, particularly with respect to patients, and we do a lot with no fault, we do a lot with various other areas. As you know, medical marijuana was passed, and it was passed with patients and caregivers in mind. Unfortunately, that didn't necessarily provide a safety net for patients, a way of testing, et cetera. Safe transport, that kind of thing. In 2016, the legislature passed the Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act. We were there. Justin Denaskis, who works with our firm, was right there when the governor signed it. We have been working with the legislature since, with LARA, with BMMR, to get the emergency rules, had input on that with respect to safety testing, especially in the lab area. We continue to work with them and to work with patients. Today, I just wanted to offer us as a resource to you, I do have two items here for you. One is the Senate fiscal analysis behind the bill when it was done, so you can kind of take a look at it, what's in it for Royal Oak if you guys were to consider opting into this particular Facility Licensing Act. And secondly, there's a number of myths about marijuana, and I wanted to give you something to kind of look at. Please, by all means, research, follow through, call us, ask us for any questions. We'd love to be a resource for you. And with that, I'm just going to say thank you for having me and listening for about almost two minutes.
Thank you.
May I give this to one or the other?
Yeah, if you want to hand it to Ms. Halliser, City Clerk, she'll pass it down for us. Thank you. Alright, who's next? See a hand right here. Up there, behind Mr. Wolf, raise your hand up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Craig Aronoff. I'm an attorney with the Cannabis Legal Group located at 520 North Main, right here in Royal Oak. Our firm specializes in the new Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act, and to follow up what Ms. Gatz had said, we also would like to offer ourselves as a resource to your commission, to the extent that we'd like to offer an industry view. I know that the Municipal League and all the various government agencies have done a nice job of providing some information to councils such as yourselves, but the industry has another vantage point to provide, that we can offer another view of this industry as a whole by, you know, allowing us to speak to it and showing you a little bit more about what facilities look like, how they operate, how safe they are, how much the capitalization is required, so we know that we have operators that are well-funded and won't be running out of money partway through what they're doing. Our goal, like, as Ms. Gatz said from Denaskis, we too, and we work together in a lot of communities, just want to offer ourselves as a resource. We'd love to have the opportunity to come back and have a formal opportunity on your agenda, show you a little bit more about what the Act can do for the City of Royal Oak, for the residents, and for patient access safely, compliantly, in an area that is in need. It would be a benefit both financially to the community, as well as to use some properties that are underused today. And so, our hope is, is that we can continue the conversation. Today was my opportunity to come in and introduce myself. I know that the information that Denaskis offered is going to be very helpful. There's more we can offer as well, so look forward to another conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, did you have your hand? Okay, there it is this time. Hold on, Mr. Wolf.
I don't know if this microphone is working. I'm having difficulty hearing, and I'm, I'm right up front. Just quickly, I want to point out that I'm all for medical marijuana and legalization of marijuana, but I also want to point out that marijuana and alcohol tend to exponentially increase each other's effects, and I'm concerned about people driving under the influence of both marijuana and, or any drug, and alcohol. We have, we are beginning to witness more and more the effects of alcohol has on exacerbating previous problems people have, and we, we never hear much about it. We just hear about, you know, what, the crimes, but we don't hear what caused, what may be at the bottom of those crimes. And since we live in a town, in a city, that where alcohol is a, is a major source of income, we have to be especially vigilant. Now, I also wanted to point out, I witnessed a lot of problems on Third and Main. I've been telling people about, telling you and others, that I complained about this, this light that has been out, but I happened to notice it, it was, I think, the possibility that it, it had helped cause accidents and problems, more than once, because people attempt to cross that walk, and that light has been burnt out for years and years. I called DTE, and I'm saying, reiterating this again, they brought that light up on camera, and they said it doesn't belong to them, it's the responsibility of the city, and it's a sodium light. There's also one that's kind of dying out on 11 Mile, on the east side of the street, and I don't see any kind of light at Diablo's where I think there should be one. I think we need to look at lighting in the city and make sure the lighting is, is safe, so, because we need to be proactive in preventing accidents and, involving pedestrians. And also, by the way, just one little clue here, I'm a bit confused about the free, the two-hour free parking in the parking structure. How many, is, is it Monday through Friday? Is it, does it include Saturday? And I think you ought to publicize the fact that you do have free, we have free, free signs saying we have free two-hour parking in the parking structures, and that will free up our street parking, because a lot of people are, you know, have no idea that this is going on. I walked by somebody putting money in the meter, and they're shocked, they're only getting 12 and a half or 15 minutes for a quarter. And I explained to them that not only is the parking lot cheaper, but you get two-hour free parking before 5:00 p.m. So, I think the more you do that, the more you'll help the parking situation, especially with the upcoming flower show or whatever, and all these other activities that you have upcoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Who's next? Mr. Ready, I see back there?
Hi, I'm Arvind Ready. I live at 618 South Pleasant, and I just wanted to come up to invite everyone to a meeting on, about Promote the Vote, and it's Wednesday, May 23rd, at the Public Library at 6:30. For those who don't know about Promote the Vote, you could learn more at PromoteTheVoteMI.com or PromoteTheVoteMI on Facebook. It's, it's a nonpartisan ballot initiative to promote voting, and it's not the same as the gerrymandering one, so if you see anyone circulating this, this is different from gerrymandering. And I would just like to take a couple of seconds to talk about two items. There are seven items on this initiative, but one of them is no reason absentee voting, which, like I said, this is nonpartisan, this is supported by Republicans and Democrats, and it's, you know, the last three Secretaries, Secretaries of State are all Republicans, and our Republican governor supported, and our Democratic Representative, Jim Ellison, has introduced legislation for it, but it doesn't pass. So, it seems like the only way to get it through is through this initiative. But the second and probably more important one I wanted to talk about is, it'll give military service members more time to get their ballots in from overseas. It'll ensure that clerks send the ballots to service members overseas 45 days before the election, and the 45 to 40-day period would be reserved for them to make sure those ballots get out, which I think we can all agree is important. So, I just wanted to invite everyone, May 23rd, 6:30, at the Royal Oak Public Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. See, is that Mr. Esprit in the back, I see?
Good evening. Clyde Esprit, 4135 South Old Place. I wasn't actually planning on speaking until Mr. Harrison spoke, so I will wear my hat as the Chair of the ZBA, having run that meeting on Thursday evening. For those of you who are not familiar with it, microblading is a technique geared toward women who may be dealing with premature face, facial hair loss in the eyebrows or what have you, as a result of a variety of diseases, including cancer. And, and what this particular practitioner focuses on is, they replace eyebrows in a very delicate, a very intricate procedure that takes hours, so that it doesn't look like you have like a hokey tattoo on your face, but rather a very natural-looking product. And for women, this is a product that's becoming very sought out in the marketplace. And for it to be suggested by the business owner next door that this is a gateway drug toward escorts or massages is really, frankly, a gross overstatement and misstatement of the facts. At the meeting, I did ask Mr. Murphy if this meeting had been properly noticed, like all other meetings, and of course, it had been within the 300-foot radius. Only two people came to speak, both of them had the last name Harrison, and no other business owner spoke whatsoever. This did pass by an 8-to-1 initiative, and for this to be presented in a way that is somehow going to be a negative thing on Royal Oak, or, like I said- somehow going to be a negative thing on Royal Oak, or, like I said, a gateway drug to whatever, is just frankly a misstatement of fact, so I just, I wanted to state that for the record. And secondarily, I also want to come and speak on behalf of the speaker who spoke earlier. I didn't get his last name, but I do live a few houses off of Normandy, and we can definitely tell that as a result of wayfinding software, like Waze and so forth, that you've had a request for you, I think, that went in front of the Traffic Committee, I don't know if it's actually come in front of this committee, for a roundabout-type stop sign to be put in at Greenfield in Normandy, and then we talk about the truck traffic that's happening on Normandy to feed the industrial groups over closer to Coolington. This is absolutely happening, and the only thing I can attribute it to is, as a result of this software that people are using more and more often, and I would have to assume truckers are as well, we are seeing traffic flows on Normandy going through the neighborhood that frankly, five years ago, simply didn't exist. Every day, I make the left turn onto Greenfield to head south to go to my office, and five years ago, that was a 20-second wait, tops. Today, it can be five to 10 minutes, because there is no traffic coming from 14 Mile to 13 Mile, which I'm hoping at some point in time, the Traffic Committee, with the blessing of the City Commission, will address, slow it down. Those of you who are familiar with Birmingham can know that from 14 Mile to 15 Mile, you have a handful of stop signs that's taken down to 25 miles an hour. I'm hoping the same thing at some point in time happens on Greenfield from 14 to 13 Mile, because those of you who drive it know that there's nothing but residential housing until you get about a half-block or so north of 13 Mile. So those are the points that I wanted to address, and thank you, good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Esprit. Anybody else this evening? All right. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. My name is Kristin Gimble, 520 North Wilson. I'll be brief, because we're number 12 on the agenda this evening. My family and I moved home to Royal Oak from the West Coast recently, and after purchasing our home, found out that we were being asked to remove our fence because of a discrepancy between the city and the builder, which we didn't know about when we purchased the home. We have a very small lot to begin with, and I have a very large dog and a 19-month-old son, and removing the fence would effectively cut our yard more than in half, and respectfully am requesting that you approve our request for easement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gimble. Saw a hand back there. Yes, sir?
I'm Alex Williams. I'm with Mitcham Chapel AME Church at 4207 West 14 Mile. Usually, I come and sit quietly and observe and listen for things that would speak to what our church is here to do, but today, I want to bring awareness to some of the activities our church has taken part in, in the city and in the greater community of Oakland County. So we've done a number of drives for community service and benevolence generally. One is a sock drive that we did for a shelter in Monroe. Another, we collected dental supplies, so toothpaste, toothbrushes, dental floss. But most recently, we had our Spread the Love campaign for Lighthouse of Oakland County, and we had a goal of 500 peanut butter and jelly jars, and we actually collected upwards of 800, which would affect approximately 600 families. And so, we're especially proud of it. I know we shared it with Judy, and so I'm hopeful that we can continue to do these sorts of things in the future, and we just want to bring awareness to the Commission that we're open to suggestions and definitely contributions, and of course, attendance at service on Sunday mornings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you for your efforts. All right. Who's next? Do I see any other hands out there? Yes, I can, I can see an arm.
I come to you guys tonight a little bit troubled. I was hoping somebody else would speak to this, and I didn't hear anything, so I suppose it's the final public comment of the evening. I want to speak about the fatal police shooting this morning, and specifically, I'm going to leave my comments incredibly narrow. I'm troubled, I find it a little bit distressing that there was no thought to postponing the annual police awards until after the external review of this fatal shooting was completed. I just want to emphasize, as I think you all know, this was a son of Royal Oak. This was a young man who graduated from our school system, and this was a boy who played with the boy across the street from me. I know that the officer involved was incredibly distressed by this. It sounds like, from all accounts, this was a really terrible occurrence on all sides. And so, the appearance of not postponing the awards tonight, I think, presents an image of the city being somewhat cavalier about losing one of its own today. That's where I'm going to leave it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Who else is here to speak tonight? Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting back up here to this side of the table, which brings us to item number seven, the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Perush.
I'm of approval of the agenda as it is set forth in front of us.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. We have a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? Okay. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion passes, we have an agenda. This brings us to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Commissioner Levasseur.
I would like to have item P removed from the consent agenda.
Item P, which is receive and file non-action items, Fitch Ratings Notice of Rating Action, Standard and Poor's Global Ratings Report, and the April 2018 Investment Report. Okay, any other items to be moved from the consent agenda? Commissioner Levasseur, you'd like to make that in form of a motion?
I will move for approval of the consent agenda with item P removed and discussed separately.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion passes. This brings us to item number P from the consent agenda, which is receive and file non-action items, which consists of Fitch Ratings Notice of Rating Action, Standard and Poor's Global Ratings Report, and the April 2018 Investment Report. Commissioner Levasseur.
First of all, I'm very happy that the credit rating agencies still believe that Royal Oak is fairly a strong community in which to invest in. That doesn't mean that we can't do better, and I note with regard to the Standard and Poor's report, specifically at the very bottom of page four, that they express the opinion that we are very weak when it comes to debt and our contingent liability profile. They note that we have a tremendous amount of debt. That's something that we, as a body, need to be working toward, so that instead of having what amounts to essentially a B grade from the credit agencies, we can get to the point where we're getting As and A pluses.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dubak.
Sure, I'm just wondering if Mr. Johnson can speak to AA+, which I believe we've maintained for a number of years?
We've maintained AA+. Also, when we did our own analysis, that our advisor took us through the S&amp;P rating process, we saw that our score was very, very close to being a AAA, and during the discussion with S&amp;P in the aftermath of the rating, I asked them specifically about that, and they confirmed that, that we're borderline, within a couple of points of being a AAA rating.
So by these professional rating agencies, AA+, getting very close to AAA, even with, you know, recent decisions we've made over the last few years to retool how we're funding our pensions, to bond up with the new civic center, I mean, these are considerations that they're taking, that they're taking under advisement?
They're definitely considerations, and frankly, if we didn't have some of the debt load that we have, we probably would already have the AAA rating.
So according to professionals who grade cities and their finances, we are doing exceptionally well?
Yes, we've got a very good rating.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'll just add to that, I mean, maybe it's more on my private side experience, but if you're, you know, a red flag, if you're not investing in your community, then, you know, you're going to have a whole host of issues down the road, and those ratings are bound to slip. So the work we're doing today is clearly also reflected in the optimism in the ratings, in the very highly positive ratings that we see right now as well. So I guess I'll look for a motion to receive and file non-action items. Commissioner Dubak.
Okay, we have a, I guess, a motion by Commissioner Dubak, supported by Commissioner Perush. Any further discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion passes, received and filed. Okay, this brings us to item number nine, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishments. Lieutenant Moore? We'll go with, we'll start with the public hearing on Edo Ramen House Request for a New Class C Resort License.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. The Royal Oak Police Department received a request from Kumakor LLC for a new resort Class C license to be located at 4313 West 13 Mile in Royal Oak. The applicants are currently doing business as Edo Ramen House. Kumakor LLC is owned by Harold Sullivan and Edwin Batista. The applicant spent approximately $300,000 on renovations, including new furniture, fixtures, and equipment, and opened for business without alcohol in December of 2017. The applicants are now seeking this new resort Class C license from the state of Michigan for $23,000. This is a new license, not a transfer, and it does require local government approval. This license also cannot be moved from the approved location, and any request for a transfer of ownership requires local government approval. The applicants are leasing the building at that property. Mr. Batista has been actively involved in the restaurant business since 2011, and he currently owns and operates Edimami Sushi in Madison Heights, which also has a Class C liquor license since 2011, and he has no violation history with the state. Mr. Sullivan has no experience in the restaurant business and has never held an interest in an establishment that serves alcohol. I contacted the Madison Heights Police Department. They characterized Edimami Sushi as a well-run establishment with responsible operators, so they have no concerns. If approved, the applicants intend on adding alcohol service to their Asian fusion restaurant, offering beer, wine, and spirits. The requested hours of operation are Sunday to Monday from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. The kitchen will be open until closing, with the last service of alcohol 15 minutes prior to closing. The menu will feature a wide variety of Japanese ramen and sushi, and they anticipate their alcohol ratio to be 85% food to 15% alcohol. They have approximately 3,900 usable square feet, and the total interior seating is for 83 patrons, including nine seats at the sushi bar. They're not requesting an outdoor service area, entertainment, or a dance permit. They are, however, requesting to have occasional live acoustical music, and they have agreed to comply with our sound ordinance as if approved. My findings indicate they meet all the necessary requirements to be granted this request, and the police department does not object to this request either. I just wanted to point out, with the Northwood Shopping Center development underway, we're anticipating two more license requests in the future.
Any questions for Lieutenant Moore? Okay, thank you. Is a petitioner here this evening? Ms. Allen?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Commission, I am Kelly Allen, here tonight on behalf of Edo Ramen, should say it right. I would like to introduce to you the applicants, come on up here, Eddie. This is Harold Sullivan. He is the owner of the establishment, and he has infused all of the capital. On there, infusion. And this is Eddie Batista. He is the executive chef, and he is also full-time now in the Royal Oak location. What the police department has stated is absolutely correct, and they did open without a liquor license in 2017 in late December. It is going very well for them over there. If you stop by the restaurant, the food is very good. They want to make themselves full-service, they want to be able to attract more customers and be on a level playing field with many of the restaurants surrounding in the area. They're not in the downtown, so I think that's a plus, actually, taking it out on 14 mile ways. This is a resort Class C license, which means that it cannot be moved by state law. So if it is approved by the city and by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, it cannot be transferred from that location for any reason. It can be transferred to another owner, of course, with the prior approval of the city and a different plan of operation. I would like Harold to tell you a little bit about why he got into this, it's sort of his second livelihood, and then have Eddie speak for a couple of words.
I currently am semi-retired from my corporation, where my two sons are running it currently. And so, I have a little extra time. I've known Eddie for 30 years. He's been in the restaurant business for 30 years, maybe over 30 years, excellent chef. He gave me this opportunity to become a restaurant owner, and that's the reason why I am here tonight, requesting the liquor license.
Questions?
Eddie doesn't want to say anything.
Eddie, no, where's Eddie?
Eddie's good in the kitchen. Right. Certainly, we are here to answer any questions. I do want to note that they have about 20 employees, probably have to add a couple of employees with our service. Everyone will be tip-certified. Mr. Sullivan has been made quite aware of how serious it is to have a liquor license and what that means, especially in the city of Royal Oak, and so I don't think you'll see any problems either with police resources being used or anything else of that nature. I think it's just going to add another dimension to a very fine restaurant in the city.
Any questions? Commissioner Gibbs.
I live very close to the restaurant, although I have not been. I'm sorry. My concern is traffic flow and parking, if alcohol is going to be served, maybe, do you plan on having the traffic or the parking roll over into the subdivision?
No, the parking, the parking wouldn't change at all, and certainly, we wouldn't plan on having any parking roll over into the subdivision. I don't think that your tables turn over either more quickly or less quickly when you have alcohol service. This is a restaurant, and the alcohol service is just a sidebar. It's not a bar, so you won't see people coming in and spending a lot of time drinking, and so it should be about the same as it is.
And I agree with that assumption, that that's how, as a neighbor, I see it. I just wondered if, how you were going to address, at least at the beginning, there may be more traffic and where more traffic, more parking needed.
Well, currently, there is parking behind our building, restaurant, and then the landlord also owns property across the street over there, so that's our parking also. So we have ample parking lot, or parking facilities for everybody.
Okay.
Any other questions for the petitioners? Commissioner Dubak.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, no question, okay. All right, thank you. We're going to open up the public hearing. All right, we're going to open up the public hearing now. Same rules apply, that did for public comment in the beginning. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record, and who's first? Anyone here to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. My name is Gregory Bader. I live right next to the restaurant. I'm at 3367 Prairie, so my side fence abuts the parking area. So the concerns I have, number one, are too many people are going to find out about the wonderful food they have, about the beautiful interior they have, about the care that they put into the whole design, and it's going to become that much more popular for everyone to enjoy. Right now, it's kind of our hideaway that we can slip into, always get a table, and always get the excellent service from their building and growing staff. You know, at the start, it was a little slow, but now, they really are coming into their own, and so I think that with the Class C license, it's going to become that much more popular. The 1:00 a.m., I will candidly say, the 1:00 a.m. closing time does concern me, because I like to get to sleep before midnight, and on the occasions where they've had their sinks cleaned out or carpeting done, you know, there's been noise later at night. And so, I'm a little concerned that if it stays open till 1:00, which I'm not sure that the traffic is going to be there for the restaurant, if the foods, if the alcohol is associated with the food service, it probably won't be open all the way till 1:00. But that's my only concern. There's lights on in the back of the parking lot, those go right in. Those go right into, you know, my backyard as well. But, you know, those, I guess overall, they've been a very good neighbor for us thus far. When they were building the place out, Mr.
Larson, right?
Sullivan.
Sullivan, I was close.
I was close. He was attentive, and we had a good conversation on that, and he was very apologetic for the one time only. I think they've been a very good neighbor thus far. I'm anxious to see them develop. We had this as a rental home. We were about ready to move, and then we got the notice that Fiddleheads was closing, and we postponed our move because that was going to become our little neighborhood bar and establishment. So we've waded through several restaurants that have come and gone in that space, and this one seems to be a keeper. I mean, it's definitely a big investment. I'd like to see them have this license. I support it with some caution that hopefully there won't be any issues by going to 1:00 at night, and I'd like, and I would expect to see the same consideration that they've shown us thus far go into the future. So, there we are. And lastly, thank you for all your service.
Mr. Bader? Anything else here to speak on this public hearing this evening? Mr. Wolf?
Ron Wolf, 333 North Troy Street. I just want to say, I support alcohol, especially outside of the central business district, where it seems to be where it causes most of the problems. And there's no, I have never heard of any real problems with alcohol being served outside of the central business district in Royal Oak. It's no worse, no better than any, I mean, no problems in, I think, compared to other communities, and I see no reason to deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Anyone else here to speak at this evening's public hearing? All right, we're going to bring the meeting back up to here, on this side of the table. Looking around, Commissioner Dubak?
Your ma'am. I think, given the positive police recommendation, and have established a business in our community that's doing well and apparently is a very, very good neighbor, I'm happy to move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubak. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Anything additional, Commissioner Dubak?
I think, per usual, the police have done a thorough job of reviewing and recommending approval of this license, and particularly like hearing that if there are any problems with the hours, or that they've already demonstrated they're willing to work with their neighbors to alleviate any concerns that arise, so.
Any other discussion?
Ditto.
Ditto? More ditto's? I'll just add, I'll just add that, you know, it's a great place. I have eaten there. My daughter, my 10-year-old daughter loves sushi, and she loves ramen, or ramen, or however I mispronounce it consistently. And we really enjoyed our experience there. I think you guys do a great job. Friendly service, well-run establishment. I couldn't concur more and echo the ditto's, and echo ditto, that'd be a weird one. So I think, notwithstanding further delay here, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
This brings us to item number B of Agenda Topic Nine, which is Oak City Grill Request to Change Plan of Operation for Transfer of Ownership. Lieutenant Moore?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. Royal Oak Police Department's received a request from 212 Sixth R O L L C to transfer ownership of a Class C liquor license from 212 West Sixth Street LLC. The applicant is also requesting to add a new Sunday sales permit. They'll continue doing business as Oak City Grill at that location. The applicant is requesting to change the hours of operation to open for lunch. Currently, they're open from 4:00 p.m. until 2:00 a.m. seven days a week, and they're requesting to open Monday to Saturday from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m., and Sundays from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m. for brunch. The applicant is also requesting to offer live entertainment on Sundays, and currently they feature live entertainment Tuesday to Saturday from 9:00 p.m. until 1:00 a.m. The overall format, floor plan, and menu remains unchanged. Their total proposed interior seating will remain at 150 patrons, which includes 18 seats at the bar as well. The applicant states the transfer will appear seamless to the general public. 212 Sixth R O L L C is owned solely by Gregory Lewis. The applicant will purchase the business license and the inventory for $825,000, and they will lease the building from the landlord. The applicant's never held an interest in a liquor license before. He's worked for the past 10 years as a project manager for Space Care Interiors out of Berkeley, Michigan. The former licensee, Michael Safia, will remain on as a consultant for the next year to assist in the transition, and also the general manager of Oak City Grill will remain on where he's been the general manager for the last 13 years and keeping all current staff as well. If approved, Oak City Grill will continue to operate as an American fare, full-service restaurant and bar, and they'll continue to have lunch and dinner items, including now the Sunday brunch. Mr. Safia has operated Oak City Grill in Royal Oak since 2005. He's been proven to be a responsible owner and operator, and will remain in place, as I said, to be a consultant moving forward. My findings indicate the applicant meets the requirements, and the police department does not anticipate this request to cause any additional strain or pull on our resources and does not object to this request.
Moving to questions for Lieutenant Moore? All right, no questions. Is the petitioner here tonight wish to speak, or? I know I see Mr. Safia back there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Commission. I'm Kelly Allen, here tonight on behalf of the Oak City Grill. And I want you to meet Greg Lewis, and you all know Mr. Safia. Mike's going to stay on for a year, as Lieutenant Moore indicated, so that's great news, and Sean is going to be staying on as the general manager. That's also great news, having been there for 13 years. I want to introduce you to Greg and let him tell you a little bit about himself and why he's getting into this business.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Commission. I grew up just a mile from here, and my friends and I used to ride our bikes downtown when it just seemed that Joe's Army Navy and dust balls were coming off of the railroad, so it's been a real pleasure to watch the city grow and move forward. I look forward to moving forward with Sean and continuing on the Oak City tradition with local artists, local musicians, local employees, and food and beverages. So just looking forward to be a part of it, meet you guys, and thank you.
Thank you.
So if you have any questions of Mike, or of Sean, or of Greg?
Questions? Commissioner Dubak?
Yeah, just looking to reiterate, so still same plan of operation, do the live music on occasion, substantial changes to the menu or the ambiance, anything like that?
Not really. We're going to spruce it up a little bit. We have an old, sorry. We're going to spruce it up a little bit. We do commercial interiors out of Berkeley. We have a family business. So it's an old building. We're going to spruce it up, which helps us maintain costs there, and, but we don't anticipate any changes, a few maybe quicker things from the menu. We have very large portions and hearty meals, so maybe something a little quicker for people to be able to get to a show at the theater or what have you, so nothing major, though.
Okay. My wife and I love Oak City, so glad you'll be continuing on.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Perush?
Not a question. It's just one more place for Sunday brunch. That's it. We live for those moments.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think there must be a mistake. 13 years? Wow.
I feel like, I mean, I don't know. It must be shown. That's a long time. I feel like it just opened, and we were celebrating it, and when you took it over, Mike, and...
We were in fifth grade.
Definitely getting, you have my vote now, all right? Well, great. If we don't have any other questions, I'll entertain a motion from the commission. Commissioner Perush?
I will move approval of this change in the plan of operation.
Second by Commissioner Perush, second by Commissioner Dubak. Discussion? Okay, well, sounds favorable. We'll see what happens, huh? All right, let's call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Didn't even hear crickets. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Safia, congratulations again on another success. Thank you, Lieutenant Moore, for all your hard work as well. All right, let me get situated here for a second. Okay, I sense there's a Mr. Callahan behind me, so that must mean that we're at Agenda Item Number 10, Additional Public Hearing of Assessment on Special Assessment Standard Resolution Five paving of Renford Road. Mr. Callahan?
Yes. Most of you don't remember. Renford was one of the first streets we had a petition for to pave right before the millage went into effect, and during the course of that process, the commission came up with an incentive program to get people, additional people to come forward and have their gravel roads paved for the first time. In the course of this project, we had a fairly good engineer's estimate of the overall cost. However, there was a problem with our spreadsheet, and costs were switched between the property owners and the city. So when we came back with the assessor's report, we had a misplaced number. When you do Standard Resolution Five, and you're more than 5% difference from what the assessor's report says, you have to have another standard, sorry, another public hearing. So the public hearing is for this evening. All the four property owners that are part of that assessment district have been notified, and once you have that public hearing and hear any comments regarding the assessment, you should move forward with Standard Resolution Five, which is attached.
Any questions for Mr. Callahan? Commissioner Perush?
The only question I have is that, based on Table One, which we have attached to the memo, the original petition came in in 2015, and we're now in 2018. Can you explain why there's a three-year gap here?
I'll do my best. At the time when the millage was starting in 2014, we, the first year of the millage was 2015, we only had this one street approved for a special assessment, and we were hoping to get better pricing, like lower costs, by grouping a bunch of special assessments together, which we're going through the process. We did that. We bid out the project, but we must not have hit the timing right, because some of the costs came in higher, so we decided to hold off and bid the project out again when we thought the prices would come in a little more favorably.
So was that in 2016 it was bid out again?
Yeah, it was back to pave in 2016, and we decided that with the funding for the millage and the amount of work that was part of this project, we split it over two years. So we did some in 2016 and some in 2017. So now that we have all the projects done, all the final cost estimates are complete, the punch list items have been taken care of by the contractor, getting the lawns to grow and fixing broken pieces of concrete sidewalk and what have you. We're now bringing this back to the commission for finally getting it approved and down to the city treasurer, so that the billing can start.
So the project was actually constructed in 2016? Or you said it was split?
It was split between two construction seasons, 2016 and 2017.
Was it like one half of the road one year, one half of the road the other year?
No, there's nine streets.
Oh, nine streets.
That were all part of one project, so.
Okay. So it was more than just Renford?
Yes. Under Item 11, which is next, are the other eight streets.
Oh, okay.
Who don't need to have another public hearing, because all of their costs were very close to the estimated cost, within 5%. So they don't need to have a public hearing, they just need to be voted on.
Okay. I think. Okay. I don't have any questions right now.
Commissioner Macy?
I had a question about the chart, too, actually. When it says original petition that was signed by 100% of the residents, is that how much they initially thought it was going to cost, those 9,000 numbers?
Yes.
Okay, and then it came back 4,000, and that was a mistake?
Yes.
And now, okay. That's all.
Any other questions for Mr. Callahan? All right, we'll open up, oh, Commissioner Dubak?
Just want to make sure I'm clear. So we still, this still came in about 30% under?
Once we corrected the numbers in the spreadsheet, realized we had a problem. We're here to have this public hearing. We've notified the property owners that their costs will be changing from what they thought they might have gotten back in 2016, 2015.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner LaBassar?
This ties in with the next agenda item as well, but I noted that with the various special assessment districts, that there seem to be different percentage splits between the city and the members of the district. Could you explain how those percentage splits were arrived at by us?
Each block has different costs that are assigned to the city, depending on how long the block is, how much of the intersection work needs to be done. When there's more intersection work to be done, there's more costs assigned to the city, because the property owners only pay for what's adjacent to their property line. If there's an unusual triangular parcel, then there's different percentages assigned to that, so, you know, I don't have the actual information on why each, why one street might be 75%, another one might be 71%, but it has to do with a lot of different factors, and the city assessor helps us figure out what percentage is assigned to the district.
Further questions? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Same rules apply as the last public hearing and as we do a public comment. Is there anyone here to speak tonight on this matter? All right, going once, going twice. We will bring the meeting back up here. Public hearing is closed. So, I'll defer to my colleagues. Commissioner Perush?
I'll move approval of Standard Resolution Number Five for this project.
Motion by Commissioner Perush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? Commissioner Dubak?
Sorry, just one more question, I think. Commissioner Perush, I might have already covered this, want to make sure I'm clear. So everyone was noticed about the new prices, they were noticed about tonight's hearing. When did those notices go out?
About two weeks ago.
Okay. All right, cool. Thanks. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, was it roll call?
Yes.
Oh, I thought, okay. Okay, it's roll call, then. All right, we'll start with the motion maker, Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubak?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaBassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes, which brings us to item number 11.
That's going to be the case for each item on 11 as well. They'll need to be roll call votes, otherwise these would have been on consent.
So we're going to do a roll call vote for each street. Okay. All right, Mr. Callahan?
The following eight streets were paved in 2016 and 2017. The work is finalized. Each street was within 5% or less than what was estimated at the very beginning. We perfected our spreadsheets on all of these. Starting with Bassett, you know, there's a Standard Resolution Five for each one, it's a roll call vote. If you have any questions on any of these streets, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Callahan? Commissioner Dubak?
Not about the streets, just about, I see that these, across the board, have come in anywhere from just under 1% upwards of 25% under initial estimates. And so those are the estimates that we gave to folks when we were originally speaking to them about it. Those are estimates that we took in, and then the contractor came under?
Yes, so if you look at the very first one for Bassett, you know, we estimated 188,700 and some change, and the bid for that project was 151.
Right, okay. So when you're initially budgeting out the road project, are your budget for the road project, when you're casting it out over the coming years, do you budget based on our estimated costs until these actually come in?
Yes, we actually do use the costs from the project bids to develop estimates for the future road work.
But, so, I'm saying for this year, this program year, we came in well under budget. So do those funds just move forward and stay in the road fund? And I guess, say, we get five years through the tenure program, and we're trending $250,000 under budget. Do we then expand the program? Do we roll back the mill? Is that question brought to us?
Right now, we believe that we could use substantially more money... Right now, we believe that we could use substantially more money for the millage streets. We'd like to do a lot more work as we get out there. And we did some preliminary estimates in 2014 to prepare for the 10-year road millage. But as we get to these streets, we always seem to find more work that can be done. And we are skipping some, some of the minor things, so.
Okay.
Right now, it's rolled back in to the work that we're doing on local streets.
Which I'm fine with, I guess. It would just, I think we'd want to share if, if there is an expansion, if we're going to do more than we initially said, I think the community would, would like to know that. I would certainly like, like to know if there's an expansion of the scope of the project.
Okay.
Thanks. Commissioner LaVassar?
Was the decision to pave these roads, was that started by a petition of the owners of the properties that are impacted?
Yes. At the very beginning, we've always had a program where we allow people to petition us outright. Typically, it starts with a conversation either at our counter or the telephone, sometimes an email. And we developed the petitions for the various streets. When the millage started, we actually went and proactively contacted all the people that abut a gravel road that could potentially be part of a special assessment district, and asked them if anybody was interested in having a petition to circulate to their neighbors to, and, and we did get responses from some of these streets were prompted by that initial contact by us.
Okay, was there a minimum number of participants that you required to approve the petitions before you decided to move forward?
Well, when we get a petition, we bring it to the city commission. We like to see 50% or more of the frontage. If there's 500 feet on one side and 500 feet on the other side of the street, we'd like to see signatures that are equivalent to 500 feet or more of the properties before we bring it to the commission. It's then goes through a process of four resolutions that the commission has to pass to take it to the point where we can actually build the road. Standard Resolution 5 is the fifth resolution. Once it's all done, we've, take a look at all the costs that went into building that street and make sure that it's right so we can start building them.
That's normal practice, but it is not a hard requirement because I do recall us bringing one to the commission with less than 50%.
Yes, we have, in some instances, brought some to the commission that were less than 50%. And it's up to the commission to decide whether to accept the petition and move forward.
In this instance, do you know whether we hit the 50% threshold on each of these streets?
I don't have that information, but it's available in past minutes. I could get anyone that wanted that information, a copy of that.
Commissioner Perush?
It's very rare when it's less than 50%. And usually, it's a, it's a, it's a standout one that we all remember. And it's for a particular reason, whether it's a safety issue that we really think it needs to be done, or some other extenuating circumstance in terms of why we're willing to go above and beyond the general 50% threshold. My memory is terrible, but I don't recall that any one of these streets fit into any, that type of category. So my guess is that all of them received at least 50% support from the adjacent property owners.
That's my recollection as well.
I would add that the one special assessment district that's for the public alley between Rochester Road and 14 Mile Road was done without a petition. There was one property owner that was in favor of that, and none of the other property owners were in favor of it. But it was becoming a safety problem that the city was having some liability issues over with the parking that was part of the alley was falling apart and wasn't very safe anymore to, to accommodate people that wanted to use it. So the commission moved forward with that one without neighborhood support. Other than one property owner.
Any other questions for Mr. Callahan? Okay, so we have to do these one by one. And they're all going to be roll call. So, Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of Standard Resolution 5 for Massoit Road.
We have motion by Commissioner Douglas, a second by Commissioner Macy. Roll call vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, all right. What do you want to? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Perush?
Move approval of Standard Resolution Number 5 for Bassett Avenue.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. Roll call. Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs? Okay, motion passes. At least West Park Avenue. Commissioner Douglas?
Move to approve Standard Resolution 5 for West Park Avenue.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. Commissioner Douglas?
I vote approval of Special Assessment Standard Resolution 5 for Gerard Avenue.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Douglas, seconded by Commissioner Macy. Is there discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, the motion passes. All right. Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of Standard Resolution 5 for Orchard Grove Drive.
Commissioner Macy, seconded, surprise. Oh, very good. Okay, any, any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. Commissioner Douglas?
Approval of Standard Resolution 5 for South Edison Avenue.
We have motion by Commissioner Douglas, surprisingly, a second by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of Standard Resolution 5 for Public Alley Rochester Road to 14 Mile Road.
Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? All right, no discussion. We'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
No.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. If you're doing a count. Commissioner Douglas?
Move approval of Standard Resolution 5 for Public Alley Whitcomb Avenue to Millard Avenue.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, with none. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. All right, we got through that.
And I'm sorry, we had to put you through that.
I just love saying my colleagues' names. It's amazing.
At least you remember them all.
Who's going to guess what I'm going to dream about tonight? All of you have been brainwashed. When they find me years later, repeating your names, will know why. All right, this brings us to Item Number 12, a license agreement for 520 North Wilson Avenue. And I, Mr. Callahan is still back here.
I'm still here, and I wasn't--
Overtime tonight, Mr. Callahan.
Prepared to present this because I wasn't asked to, but since my name's on the letter, I will. I've been thrown under the bus by my boss. Some, a request from a neighboring property representative asked this commission to look into a license agreement that was approved last year for Northwest Street, where the city had been working with the property owner, no advertising, to find solutions to their parking problem. They're very-- I'm sorry.
The other one first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
520 North Wilson, 520 North Wilson. Well, I did do that one.
The property owner of 520 North Wilson was notified back in March that they had a fence that had been placed on city property. There was some contact with the property, with the fence company a year ago, or when the fence was installed, that it was installed improperly. And the fence company walked away from the conversation, saying it wasn't their problem. That led to the letter that we sent to them. The property owner's been in contact with it, they're here tonight. They have fenced in about six feet of the public property. It, the way that block is set up is a little bit confusing. When we did the sidewalk program back in 2014, the neighboring property has some trees out in the right-of-way where a sidewalk would normally go, so we put the sidewalk in that block out by the edge of the road. Most people assume that the property line is one foot from the sidewalk. The fence applicant, on behalf of the builder, put the fence in at that location, that's where they showed it on a plan that they submitted to the building department, who also made the assumption that that's where the property line is. But it is not at that location. Needless to say, we notified the property owner that they had several options at their disposal, one of which was to come before the city commission and ask for a licensed agreement to keep that fence in its current location. All the documents that they had in their possession are attached to the commission letter. The commission letter lists two options for the city commission to either act on. One would be to not approve a license agreement, which would also be directing the property owner to remove the fence from the city property. The other one would be to approve the license agreement, which would allow the property owner to keep the fence on city property.
Mr. Callahan? Can you explain a little bit if there's any significant concerns to the safety and well-being of the area based on the placement of the fence right now?
Right now, the fence, as it is, other than being on city property, meets city code. Currently, the city doesn't have plans to use this particular portion of the public right-of-way for any upcoming purpose. So no plans to put utilities there or any other feature that would conflict with the fenced-in area.
Commissioner Macy?
In the letter, it says, "While application was made to obtain the permit, the information provided was false, and the permit would have been denied had correct information been provided." Could you explain that? What, what false information was provided? I missed that.
The, the fact that it did not provide the property line, that's something that was typically required in these applications, to show that the fence itself is being placed on their private property in accordance with the ordinance.
Okay, so it was missing a piece of information?
It was missing a piece of information. And I'm not saying it was neglected intentionally. I'm just saying it was not put on the plan that could be used to cohesively and completely analyze the location.
Commissioner Douglas?
If we denied the request for a license, what recourse would the property owner have for civil redress of their, of the mistakes? And maybe that's a question I, I lob over to the city attorney.
Well, redress against the city, none, so.
I mean, is, is, was, is there a complaint with the, the fence builder or with us?
Well, the issue, as I understand it, is further complicated by the fact that the property has recently changed hands also. And so there may be issues of disclosure and non-disclosure, potentially, between the buyer and the seller. Again, I don't have all the details and I can't, but, but those issues are potentially out there. And I think that's been a complicating factor for the engineering department as they've tried to work through this license agreement issue.
So they might have to go through the, what, the title company come, enter in on this, or?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dubac? So, Mr. Callahan, right now, there is no need for us to use that property to access any existing utilities. There's no reason in the foreseeable future we need access to that, that easement?
At the current time, you're correct.
Does the license agreement speak to that? If the city does have a need that's in the public interest to utilize that property, is there a certain amount of time of notice that's given to the property owner?
Yes. Actually, we have a time where we can notify the property owner that we want to use the licensed area for a legitimate public purpose. If we ever felt that we wanted to rescind the license, there's a 90-day period that we have to give notice to the property owner, and they can come and speak before the city commission to either request to keep it, or they would have to remove their fence from the right-of-way within that 90-day frame, timeframe.
And I guess I would ask the, the city attorney, is that, are those terms ironclad? Or would they be able to then tell a court, well, this is going to do, you know, we've had the property for eight years, and it's part of our home now, and, and this is going to harm us more than the city actually needs the property? Or is the license, the terms of the agreement are, are pretty firm, legally speaking?
Obviously, no guarantees as to what a court is going to do, because a court does sit in equity, and a court can, does as it sees fit. But really, it's a question of contract. And the language in the contract is very clear as to what the city's rights are.
And the contract would move with the owner of the home, if they were to sell the home? Or would a new homeowner have to come forward and, and get a new agreement with the city?
Per Paragraph 6, the license runs with the land, so this terms would carry over to a subsequent owner.
And that would be subject to required disclosure by, if a realtor was selling the property, they would have to tell someone trying to buy the property that there is this agreement in place with the city, correct?
They should, that's correct. Yes.
Thanks. Commissioner LaVassar?
Just, just to be clear, my, my understanding is whatever erroneous information was provide, wasn't provided by the current owner, but, but by a previous owner?
Well, I believe it was by the fence company, who was hired by the builder. Yes, I'm getting a nod, that's what I understand.
Which is not the current owners.
No, unfortunately, the current owners are between a rock and a hard place at this point, not of their own choosing.
All right, and it's, it's a situation, if I understand correctly, there, there was a certain amount of approval by our building inspectors here, they, they didn't catch this?
Yes.
All right. And if I understand you correctly, there's no issue with the public safety, and there's no current plans by the city to make use of this, this public right-of-way?
That's correct.
All right. I, I would hate to welcome new people into our community by slapping them in the face and saying, you've got to remove a fence when there's no threat to the public safety and there's no current use by the city. So I'm going to move that we approve the license agreement with the owners of 520 North Wilson.
Motion by Commissioner LaVassar, supported by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? Commissioner Perush?
The only question I have, and this is a picky legal question, is in terms of the covenant number six that says it's going to run with the land, if that's the case, given the terms of the agreement, why are we not recording this? Or should we record it, so that it's clear to a title company and a, and a next owner that in fact the license agreement exists? Otherwise, they're going to have to dig it out of some file, and they may not even know that it, that it's in there.
That's a good suggestion. In fact, the, the document could very easily be recorded. Yeah.
In terms of the motion that's on the table, I would move to amend the motion to include the fact that there should be wording added to this license agreement that it be recorded once it's executed.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Perush to amend the original motion to include the language that this license agreement be recorded.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? With none? Okay, we'll call a vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The amendment passes, and it's now part of the original motion. And so is there any further discussion on the original motion? Commissioner Macy?
This is one block away from me. I live on the corner of Forest and Wilson. And when I saw, first saw this, and I saw that the fence couldn't be right on the sidewalk, I was really confused, and I drove all around the neighborhood, and everywhere else, the sidewalk is right on, the fence is right on the sidewalk. But of course, it's because that we did that, we did that special thing for the, to protect the trees, so that we moved the sidewalk all the way to the edge. I will say I'm a little annoyed with the builder. This was, I believe, a double-lot property that then they cut into, made two properties. And I have a feeling that the builder must have known to begin with that they saw the land survey, they must have known that this wasn't there. So I feel annoyed with the builder, but I have no wish to punish the current owners. And I, having driven past it many times, I can say that the backyard would be tiny, but for this side lot yard. So, welcome to the neighborhood. And, yeah, I hope this passes.
Any other discussion? Well, to add, you know, typically, we don't want to enter into one-off license agreements with anybody and everybody that wants to put a fence, you know, adjacent to a property line. But I think in this particular case, considering its history and the number of issues, the calamity of issues from the contractor, it sounds like, all the way through to, you know, some of our misses in the building department, you know, I think this is a situation. You know, I think this is a situation, I mean, we did our best attempt to save those trees. Trees are a priority in the community, we moved the sidewalk. I think this is a very unusual circumstance. So, I don't believe we're setting any precedent here, rather, you know, making a sound resolution for the neighbors that are impacted. So, Commissioner Dubac?
Agreed, and I think this is an appropriate motion. I would just say, hopefully, our building department is on notice to make sure that we're double-checking those plans. I wouldn't want a developer to think they can sell a property as larger than it is because, you know, we'll be so forgiving because we don't want to harm a new homeowner, which I think is the right thing to do. But I think we need to be perhaps a little bit more vigilant in reviewing those plans going forward.
Okay. No other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes and we will sign the license agreement and get it recorded, so, thank you. All right. This brings us to item number 13, which we discussed for 18 seconds, which is a history of the license agreement, Learn Equities 422 West 11 Mile Road. Mr. Callahan?
Okay, the floor is yours. All right. So, Learn Equities had approached the city over the last couple of years to come up with some solutions to their parking problem. They're a very established business in Royal Oak. They have an architecturally significant building that sits on a site that doesn't really have room for any parking at all. What prompted them to come forward this final time was because we were paving Sherman Drive. And on Sherman Drive, we were putting in sidewalks. And the way they were parking was using part of the right-of-way, which would have been parking their vehicles right on what our sidewalk would be. So, he knew he was going to be losing some parking there and we started to come up with some creative solutions to his issue. The public right-of-way next to his building on West Street is a very short block between 11 and Sherman and it's fairly wide, wide enough actually to get some angle parking on. And we looked at a couple different parking scenarios with parallel and angle parking. And we came up with one where we would lose two public places to create five public angle parking spaces. And Mr. Van House was open to that idea and open to covering the cost of the configuration change of that road to make those parking spaces happen. Roughly $10,000 is what I believe he's put forward, put into the, his efforts. So, after a meeting with him, with the city manager, we drafted a license agreement and brought it to the city commission for city commission approval. And that was late last summer, right around the time they were building Sherman Drive next to his building. So, some of the changes that needed to be made could be incorporated in the design of the road.
Mr. Gillum?
Maybe I can pick it up a little bit from there. Subsequent to the approval of the license agreement, there was a FOIA request that was filed with the city by an attorney's office representing Mr. Elkes, who was here tonight, has been here before, asking for background relative to the license agreement. And the city responded appropriately, turned over copies of email correspondence, minutes of the license agreement, things like that. The attorney whose office had made the FOIA request then contacted my office and again, I guess, just wanted me to confirm what they saw in the notes and what they saw in terms of what the process had been. He indicated to me that his client had indicated to him that they had not been consulted in the process. I believe Mr., the documents that Mr. Callahan and Mr. Twing have provided would indicate that there was written notice that was sent to Mr. Elkes, but Mr. Callahan might be able to address that better than me. But anyway, they've, Mr. Elkes apparently felt that they had not been appropriately advised and consulted about the proposed change to the parking, that is, the elimination of the two on-street parking spaces directly to the east of their property and the substitution or replacement of those spots with the five angled spots that are reserved strictly for the use of no advertising. Again, through the, his attorney, Mr. Elkes, was indicating that the loss of those spaces had affected their ability to use and/or potentially rent the property. As I understand, the property is vacant now and has been vacant for some period of time. So, Mr. Elkes has himself appeared at a couple of the commission meetings. He has corresponded with you. The request that they have made is that the license agreement be terminated upon 90 days' notice. There are some other alternatives that have been presented by the staff. Mr. Van House, in fact, had presented yet another alternative where some of the spaces could be restricted to no advertising and then a couple of the spaces would be left for public parking. But again, the ultimate decision as to what, if anything, should be done is up to the city commission. As it stands right now, the license agreement is in place.
Questions for Mr. Gillum or Mr. Callahan? Mr. Callahan, can you advise us a little bit about the notice that was provided to Mr. Elkes?
I can't advise you to that. I do not know that the neighboring properties were notified of this license agreement. With the license agreement for the fence, we did not notify neighboring properties that the city was going to be doing something unusual with the public property. It's my understanding that the license agreement and commission letter was prepared on a Tuesday morning, just in time to get it to the city manager to get on the city commission agenda because the road was being paved at the end, the following Tuesday morning and we needed to have a decision about what to do with that roadway at West and Sherman Drive. So, it all moved very quickly. So, I can't say the property owner adjacent across the street was notified.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, the letter that was prepared indicates that the surrounding property owners were notified about the changes to Northwest Street and not the actual parking configuration. So, I misspoke. I stand corrected on that.
Additional questions? Commissioner Proust?
I don't have any other questions, but just to kind of move this along and we can have some discussion, I will make a motion that the license agreement be modified to create two public spots and three spots for Learn Equities. And that's it so far.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Proust, second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion, now that we have a motion on the table. Commissioner Proust?
Well, this was a solution that was proposed by Learn Equities. It does give them some parking that's dedicated to them, which they have needed. They certainly have contributed a lot to the community in terms of the value that they've added to that property, in terms of the way that they have maintained it, improved it, and so on and so forth. I can't say the same for, unfortunately, for Mr. Elkes's properties. But it does provide him, it does provide two public spots, which Mr. Elkes seems to argue that is what he needs because that's what was there before. So, I think the solution is kind of the best solution for everybody involved. It may not be perfect on either side, but I think it gives both sides some relief in terms of the existing situation. So, that's why I made the motion.
Any other discussion? Mr. Gillum?
If I could, Commissioner Proust, just a point of clarification. The email from Mr. Van House also talks about reimbursement of a portion of his costs. Is that something he wanted to explore or not?
I guess I wouldn't have any diff, in terms of discussion, I wouldn't have any difficulty in terms of adding that in. It's a relatively modest amount, given the amount of activity and the expense of the project itself. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that. I wouldn't have any problem in terms of adding it in.
So, I wouldn't be in favor of the repayment and the reason is that he paid for three free parking spots. $3,000 per parking spot for the terms of this license agreement seems like a pretty good deal to me. If I had that offer for a free downtown park, for a free downtown parking spot that would be dedicated to me for $3,000, I think that's not a bad deal. That's my take on it.
Mr. Proust?
The only other thing that I would add was also, when I read through the existing license agreement, in this one as well, there is no provision that it be recorded, even though it's a covenant running with the land. So, I'm just going to suggest, um, hmm, how do I amend my motion?
You can offer up an amendment.
Yes, I will offer an amendment to my original motion to indicate that whatever license agreement is developed for this, that if it is going to be a covenant running with the land, that it be recorded.
Okay, we have an amendment.
Support?
We have support by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I actually have a question. Will the public spaces be, the two, if we approve this motion, will the two public spaces be metered? I mean, if not, the net effect is that no advertising people can continue to park there as long as there's an available parking space.
Well, even, sorry.
Yeah, those two spaces would be available on a first-come, first-served basis.
Right.
So, they would not be metered?
They're not now.
No. Because we're outside of the, we're outside of the central business district, so... Unless there's some weird little carve-out I'm unaware of on a map.
So, that seems to me to make it even more, probably more advantageous to Learn Equities.
Commissioner Macy, saw your hand up?
Just wanted to commend Commissioner Proust on her excellent grasp of property law.
Property law, boring property law.
Everyone's favorite subject.
Any other questions or discussion on the amendment that's in front of us right now? Okay, I'll vote for the amendment to the original motion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, now that brings us to the original motion with the amendment in place. Any further discussion on it? Okay, Commissioner Dubac?
I think Commissioner Proust has proposed a very reasonable solution to this problem for both business owners.
Yeah, I agree, it's pretty reasonable considering that they aren't metered spots. You know, if there truly is a demand, then it's remedied. If there's not, then, you know, the spots are available still for the, you know, status quo, the existing way that business is being conducted in that area right now, so... All right. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to item number 14, Charter Review. Start with item number A, Charter Review Committee Recommendations. Is that Mr. Moore? Are you doing rap?
Mr. Moore is here, yes.
We have two Mr. Moores present tonight. More Moores.
More, more.
More and more, all right. Well, who's best to hand this off to? Mr. Moore, Mr. Gillum, Mr. Johnson? Certainly not Lieutenant Moore.
I mean, I guess I can start in just very general terms and I'll introduce the two recommendations that have come from the committee and then Mr. Moore can follow up and maybe put some meat on the bones, if you will. So, two recommendations that the Charter Review Committee has forwarded for the city commission's consideration. The first is fairly straightforward. The city charter does contain a number of fairly detailed sections regarding the process to be followed in the event of recall of an elected official, where there is also a substantial body of state law that covers the same subject. And in fact, the state law would preempt any provisions in the city charter regarding recall. So, what the committee has come up with and has been blessed in concept by the attorney general's office is for there to be a general reference in the city charter to the state law provisions regarding recall and then the specific provisions in the city charter would be deleted or removed. So, there would just be a general reference. The second is an issue that has been visited by the city commission before, but the charter currently provides that a midterm city commissioner must resign his or her seat on the city commission in order to be able to run for the office of mayor. And the recommendation that's come forward from the committee is that that language be deleted, which would allow a midterm city commissioner to run for mayor without having to resign his or her position. With that, Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moore?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner's staff, Rob Moore. I'm the chairperson of the Charter Review Committee. And Mr. Gillum is correct. We are recommending two recommendations on the August primary ballot for this year. The first one was some recall provisions from Chapter Four. That was a recommendation out of the city clerk's office. The current language in the charter is from 1950. Changes not long after that in Michigan state election law, as well as the state constitution in 1963, have largely preempted that language. So, as Mr. Gillum stated, that it's essentially cleanup language in that regard. One of the things that the committee actively does is go through the city charter and actively look for language in the charter that could be streamlined, that could be brought into line with current state law. There's quite a bit in the charter that's holdover, not only from 1921, when the original charter was adopted, but actually from the Village of Royal, our charter from, excuse me, Village of Royal Oak charter from 1891. So, there's a significant amount of language there that could be updated to bring it in line with current state law and best practices as well. So, again, it's largely cleanup language. The other one, the provision having to do with a midterm commissioner not having to resign their office to run for mayor was, as Mr. Gillum stated, something that the committee brought before the commission several years ago. I believe at that time, I can't remember the exact year, that did not get supermajority recommendation. There was not the necessary amount of commissioners, the five that, to approve that. We feel largely that that would make things more efficient in terms of elections. There's nothing in the Home Rule City Act, there's nothing in current state law that stipulates that that's a requirement. There are many communities around us that do not have that requirement. I mean, you can have it, but you don't have to have it. So, that's just something we're bringing before you in terms for your consideration. We feel it'd make things a little better as far as elections, but again, that's your call. So, again, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? No questions, okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Well, I'll only comment that I represent the commission on the Charter Review Committee. Just came into this committee as of the first of the year, so this second item, I have no voice or vested interest in whatsoever. It's entirely at their initiative. And they do awesome work, very, very thoughtful discussions. And I'm very impressed by the work of this committee. Bravo.
Thank you. Commissioner Proust?
I'm quite sure that I was the last person who was subject to the second recommendation of this committee to have been required to resign my seat as a city commissioner in order to run for mayor. I had to do that in 1988, when you all were in high school. So, the disadvantage to having the language the way it is is that it allows the remaining members of the city commission, the authority, to appoint someone of their choosing to fill the remaining term of that person who has resigned, which inevitably gives that person, if they are so inclined, and if the commission picks a designated person that might be interested, a certain leg up in terms of running for commission at the next city election. So, that's the political disadvantage of having the language the way it is, is if you do have then a vacancy, then it gives the rest of the city commission the ability to appoint someone who can sit in that seat as a city commissioner and have a leg up running as an elected official at the next election. So, there is a political disadvantage to having the language the way it is. It doesn't always happen that way because you may not have a city commission that would have a majority, that would appoint, be able to appoint somebody that they want, would want, that would be willing and interested in running again. You may just appoint someone a placeholder just to get you through that period of time until the city election, when other candidates would be running. But in the right set of circumstances, it can work to the political disadvantage of whoever might be thinking about doing something like this. So, that's, speaking from experience, that can, it can happen. So, I would be in favor of amending the charter so that that possibility is eliminated. Makes the elections a lot cleaner and you don't have someone who's given the gift of giving a leg up of a couple of months before. giving a leg up of a couple of months before a city election.
Other discussion? Commissioner Dubat?
Yeah, I would say that people are pretty familiar with the concept of someone sitting in elected office, running for another office. People on city and school boards run for state office. People in state office run for governor. I currently have Attorney General running for governor while still serving as Attorney General. United States senators run for president while still serving as senator, so it's certainly more the standard in our national electoral scene than not. I don't see a lot of advantages. I remember when I served on the Charter Review, the discussion was really that the most natural opposition to a sitting mayor would come from currently serving commissioners, and also the most formidable opponents would come from a currently serving commission. And I know they had notes from the meetings where those conversations took place, and it was very much targeted at kind of minimizing the threat of a sitting, you know, when there was really heated debates, minimizing that threat of someone rising up from the commission to challenge the mayor. So I don't see a lot of public benefit in the way that it currently exists in our charter. So I have no problem asking the public if they would like to change it, which is essentially what we'd be doing by placing this on the ballot.
Well, this is awkward. I agree with Commissioner Dubat. I mean, I think that, you know, and Commissioner Perush, I, I think that the most formidable candidates, most informed candidates, the ones that can speak most informed on every topic that is before the constituency, will come from this table and this body. So the thought of having to resign and, you know, I mean, there's other issues, I think, here that can play out depending if they're on a, you know, the last year of their term, or, you know, they have a four-year term, they win, then, you know, you have to make an appointment or run a special election later on, but, you know, at least that's done with the most contemporary vote of the, you know, of the electorate. So, yeah, I mean, I'm going to be supporting it as well, but I got my eye on all of you. No, I'm just kidding. All right, so it's getting a little later. We have a motion on the table that was amended. Or not. No, we don't.
No, that was the last item.
That was the previous one. Yep. Early morning today. Commissioner Perush?
Do we need two separate motions for each one of these? I would assume so, maybe not. Let's do it that way.
Okay.
I'll make them, I will move approval of placing on the ballot the, amending the charter, um, now I've forgotten what the first one was. It's late, the recall. To change the, amending the charter to remove the recall language and to put in the notation that recall procedures comply with state law.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, supported by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. Need a roll call vote?
Roll call vote, thank you, yes.
All right, well, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubat?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Commissioner Perush?
I will make a motion that we place on the ballot, language to amend the city charter to remove the provision that a city commissioner wanting to run for mayor has to resign his or her office before they can run for mayor.
Motion by Commissioner Perush, supported by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion. Think we kind of already had it. So I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubat?
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Douglas, Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, so these will be put to our voters to make the ultimate decision, and we will trust their infinite wisdom and guide us for potential charter amendments.
Just, just one procedural point. The next step will be for the clerk's office to forward the proposed action in the ballot language to the Attorney General's office and the governor for approval. We've already been in touch with the Attorney General's office, and subject to receipt of the actual documents, they've indicated they should be comfortable with what we're talking about doing. So then, the items will appear on the August primary, the August primary.
All right. Mr. Moore, you're still, there you are. Thank you very much for your service and for all the hard work, and, you know, you've been a dedicated person as it relates to the Charter Review Committee that houses a whole bunch of expertise, so we thank you for, for everything you've done. All right, this brings us to 14B, which is a charter amendment for the sidewalk millage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've just completed a six-year sidewalk program. During that time, every single sidewalk flag in the city was inspected, defective flags were replaced, and adjacent property owners were assessed the cost of the sidewalk replacement in accordance with the city charter and code. The practice of assessing adjacent property owners for sidewalk repairs is longstanding in Royal Oak, and it is also the way most sidewalk repairs are handled in Michigan communities. And it's one of the more unpopular things we do. It is one of the city commission's objectives that was adopted following the strategic planning session to offer Royal Oak residents an alternative means of paying for sidewalk repairs. Under Michigan law, our options are limited. We can continue to assess, as we're doing now, adjacent property owners, or we can levy a special ad valorem tax. Commissioner LaVassar did point out that we could also just pay for it out of the general fund, which is legal, but not practical, unless we're willing to make significant cuts to other things in the, in the general fund budget, enough to pick up roughly, next year, we're projecting about $1.2 million in sidewalk repairs. I don't have any illusions at all that a sidewalk tax levy will be popular either. However, we do think it's a fairer way to pay for sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, and we think it might prove to be less unpopular than assessing repair costs directly to adjacent property owners. So we're recommending that voters decide to be, be allowed to decide which way they prefer to pay for sidewalks and put this issue before them. And when we do put it before them, I'm not advocating that we take a particular position. I think we just put it up and let the voters decide, because we're going to repair sidewalks one way or the other. I do see some advantages for the tax and some disadvantages for the tax. On the plus side, we see sidewalks as a community benefit, not an individual benefit, so we think cost should be spread to the whole community. Damaged sidewalk is seldom the fault of the adjacent property owner, so why should the adjacent property owner be responsible for the cost of repairs? Now, when I say seldom, that's certainly not a never, because if somebody puts salt on their sidewalk, especially new sidewalk, it will spall. If they drive over it, it will crack. But most sidewalk repairs are really the result of things that people have no control over, often tree root damage. The other thing we see as an advantage is that everyone would pay a small predictable amount every year, rather than risking an extremely large assessment periodically. We do see some disadvantages. The most significant one is under the current system, we determine what work is needed first, and by billing for it, we raise the revenue necessary to perform that work. The proposed system raises the revenue first, prior to determining how much work is actually going to be needed, and the tax may raise too little revenue to complete the needed repairs, or it may raise more than is needed. Because of that, determining what the appropriate millage rate should be is difficult. If we set the rate too low, there's not enough money to complete the repairs, work will be delayed, or standards will be reduced in order to make it possible to complete the work with the money available, and sidewalk conditions will deteriorate. We think the proposed system could result in greatly increased demand for sidewalk repairs because people will feel that I paid for sidewalk repairs on my tax bill, I want you to fix my sidewalk now. We may also experience more problems with sidewalk damage caused by residents if they don't have to pay for the repairs. Finally, one issue that we're still doing some research on, basically it was our belief that tax exempt properties would not contribute, and we couldn't see a way to make them contribute, but Ann Arbor is apparently doing it. At least that's what they're telling us, but we're not seeing a legal system that really sets that up. Finally, a millage rate that's adequate now may not be adequate in the future. In the last six years of the existing program, the city's cost per square foot of sidewalk has risen from $3.36 to $5.03 for a standard four-inch sidewalk. That's almost a 50% increase in six years. We have seen, largely because of just changes in the concrete construction market in general, streets, sidewalks, everything, the price is going up on. I think our biggest danger is setting a millage rate that's too low. If we don't generate enough money to pay for needed repairs, how do we pay the balance? You know, we could reduce the amount of sidewalk to be repaired, we could lower our standards, we could use less costly and less long-lasting methods, or we could, or we could actually go back and, and assess part of the cost as we do it now, but I can't imagine anything more unpopular than to levy the tax and still do an assessment. So, in all, I think most of these options would result in gradually deteriorating sidewalks. If we happen to set the rate too high, that's an easy problem to solve, we simply don't have to levy the entire authorized millage. And we've certainly done that in the past. We did that most recently with the public safety levy and the solid waste levy, that we levied less than what was authorized. The city engineer has already evaluated the work that would be needed next year, which would be to repeat the first year, the, the area of the first year of the program, and came up with, at current costs, $1.2 million worth of work. That's basically about a half a mil worth of work. To allow for inflation, we're suggesting that we ask for the authority for up to .75 mils. And we also want to be clear that this is for repairs and related expenses, not to include the installation of new sidewalks in locations where sidewalks do not currently exist. We believe very strongly that most people in Royal Oak, almost everybody in Royal Oak, has already paid for the sidewalk adjacent to their, their property, and it wouldn't be fair to them to make them pay for somebody else's new sidewalk. But because we're starting at a time period when we have finished one repair cycle, we're between cycles, that we're starting everybody off at the same point, that's really the best time to change how we're financing annual repairs. It's a problem if we were to wait a year or two actually assess some property owners directly for the repairs adjacent to them, and then start doing it through a tax for the rest of the people. We'll be charging that to the people who just paid for their own repairs. We don't think that's reasonable. So if we're going to do it, this is the year to do it. The timing that this is actually on the agenda at the same time as the Charter Review Committee recommendations is coincidental. The Charter Review Committee was definitely looking for the August ballot. I'm actually looking for the November ballot. Specific language provided was written, was prepared by the city attorney. So we've got the charter language and the proposed ballot language, and a proposed resolution.
Questions for Mr. Johnson. Commissioner Perush?
Two questions. A number of our other earmarked millages that have been approved, public safety, any number of others, are for a specific time period, five years, 10 years, whatever. Did you consider that? Assuming that this is a six-year program, at least it has been in the past, this right now, as it is written, is kind of open-ended, it would go on forever.
Well, the need for repairs do go on forever.
Well, the need for police services goes on forever, too, but...
But the suggestion, the thought was that if you want to add a time limit, I would suggest that it be six-year.
Six years?
Not five, because we should, we should be able to get through a repair cycle. We shouldn't leave one zone of the city short.
And there's six zones in the city?
We used six zones last time around. I mean, we, we could conceivably redraw the zones and end up with, you know, five, but six is what we, we know we can do, because it's what we just did.
And that leads to my second question. When this started with Zone 1, six years ago, did, it seems like it ended way up at the north end of the city this past year. Did it start way down at the southern boundary of the city?
And can speak to those.
It's way up?
West of Main Street, south of 13 Mile Road to about Farnham, so it was quite south of Gardenia. So it was more than a square mile, it was about a mile and a, more than a square mile and a half a square mile together.
And that was Zone 1?
That was Zone 1. So it was on the east side of town, kind of in the middle.
And then, did it kind of hopscotch around the city based upon your assessment of how crumbly the sidewalks were, or did it just move in a sequential order through the city?
That is correct. We moved through the city clockwise, from the middle on the east side, then to the southern portion of the city, to the middle on the west side of the city, another section on the west side of the city, section on the northwest side of the city, and then to the northeast side of the city.
Okay, all right. Those are my only questions right now.
Any other questions? Commissioner LaVassar?
I, I note that this is a, done up as a charter revision as opposed to the way we, we did it with the public safety and the roads. And I suspect that that has a lot to do with the question that Commissioner Perush asked about the length of time that this tax would be in place. I just wanted to get clarification if there was other reasons to make it a charter provision as opposed to handling it in the manner that we handled the public safety and the road taxes.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
This was done as a, as a charter amendment, in the same manner as the solid waste millage has been done, as the public safety millage was done, as the road millage was done, because we have a template for language that we know that the Attorney General's office is comfortable with in terms of format, so.
So you're saying that public safety is also a charter revision?
That's correct.
All right.
Yes. Yeah, the authority to levy all of those millages up to the amount that's specified for the period that's specified, it's all contained in the charter.
Okay. Now, now, Mr. Callahan, I know we, we traded some emails earlier, and we were talking about some of the alternatives to replacing flags, and if you could discuss those a little bit and, and what the relative costs are compared to replacing flags?
Well, I can't tell you what the relative costs are, but I can tell you that we've looked at several options in the past, starting with the very first sidewalk program, which began in 1995. They looked at some, and actually tried some lesser, lesser intrusive methods such as shaving off the lips of the higher pieces of concrete, and even considered some other methods such as jacking, which would be pumping mud underneath the lower piece to lift it up to the higher piece. And it was determined that those practices were probably not going to be as long-lasting as a full replacement, and it didn't really address the issue of why those sidewalks were settling or raising up, if that was the case. And that was what we were finding. Most of the sidewalks, most of the sidewalk issues were the, the lips, per se, the lift or sidewalk differentials. So one of the reasons we believed was this most significant reason sidewalks were being lifted was tree roots, and unless you take methods to remove those tree roots from growing onto the sidewalks, you're going to continue to have sidewalks being raised, where one sidewalk next to it might not be raised, and... sidewalk next to it might not be raised, and without the tree roots being addressed, you were just going to see this problem continue. If you shaved off the higher portion, you would be back a year or two later shaving another piece off, and where do you stop shaving the sidewalk off? Our standards are four-inch-thick sidewalks, so once we start shaving pieces of the sidewalk off, we have less than four inches thick, it's a weaker piece of concrete. At what point does it become no longer viable to, to use that piece of sidewalk? And then you're replacing the whole slab of sidewalk in addition to all the money that you spent shaving it off, so it was found to be a, not a, not a long-lasting solution because over the long run, you spent more money maintaining that piece of sidewalk. So, I can see now that after going through a sidewalk program, we did proactively cut a lot of tree roots and removed tree roots from areas where sidewalks are being lifted. We may consider lessening our standards, but I wouldn't recommend it at this time. We can see what other cities are doing and find out what their costs are for those things, but you know, we're going to have to do a lifecycle cost of a piece of sidewalk that shows what the costs are to maintain it.
I know I've seen, you know, visiting Ann Arbor, I've seen what appears to be the sidewalks shaved down so that the flags match up, and so I am curious as to what the relative costs are. There may be some situations where replacing the flag is appropriate because of roots, but there may be other situations where shaving it is appropriate as well, because you don't see as likelihood of a problem, say, two, three years down the road. But again, it comes down to knowing what the relative costs are, I think that's important to know. The complaints that I've received from residents, that there's, there's a number of different aspects. Number one is the fairness of the present system, and I believe we all agree that that's not a very good system. This proposal is an improvement over that, I believe, but that doesn't mean that this is the best way to go necessarily. Second aspect is, is a lot of folks were concerned with the city not looking for, finding the least expensive or more practical, or financially more practical solutions such as shaving or putting the mud underneath in order to keep costs down for residents. Third, there was a number of residents who believed that flags were replaced that truly were not showing signs of becoming dangerous trip hazards, and perhaps that had very superficial defects, whether it be pitting or hairline fractures, but not rising to the level of being a trip hazard, and so a lot of folks in town questioned the need for making replacements in those instances. The city manager pointed out that he did not believe it practical to pay for sidewalks out of the general fund. I believe that's only the case because of a lot of the decisions made by this commission and previous commissions. When you're giving $5.5 million of taxpayer funds to a private developer, that takes away from funds you can use for projects like this. When you are selling, in this instance, we've got three parcels of property in our downtown area that we're either, we've either sold or about to sell, and you're selling for about $3 million or so less than market value, that takes funds away that could be used for projects like this. When you build brand-new city hall and police station, perhaps they're needed, but that's going to cost us about $2.3 million per year in debt service. That takes away from funds that could be used for the services that people are most interested in, and doing sidewalks, having sidewalks, I consider to be something that is a very basic service of, of a city government. It's not something that people should expect to have to pay extra for. The citizens of this city have already been asked to pay about $15 million a year more for public safety and roads, and it's just adding on, adding on. There has to be a point where we stop asking the citizens of our city for more taxes, and I believe that this should be paid for from the general fund. It's our job to figure out how to make that happen. I'm going to be voting no on this.
Commissioner Dubb.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Commissioner LaVassar's concerns in campaign speech. You know, this, it's completely impractical to consider using one-time dollars for ongoing maintenance needs that we know are absolutely necessary for the city. So, if the city comes into a one-time sum by selling property, you can't say, "Well, we could have funded the sidewalk program with it." That's absolutely irresponsible to do. You need a sustainable revenue source for something like sidewalks that we know are a year-round maintenance program, that's been, you know, the city's been engaging in for decades. As to the amount, though, I think there's a reasonable question, and I think before, you know, I'm comfortable asking the question, which is what it is, you know, putting a question on the ballot is asking residents for permission, which residents have continually said, "Yes, we want to invest in these things," and I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we're asking for the right amount, for the right period of time, that is responsible to do, but I think it's never inappropriate to ask residents if they want to invest more in the community, if I want to invest more in the community as a resident here. But so the number, the 1.2 million, I believe Mr. Callahan said he went out and looked at all the flags that were done in the first cycle, and if we were to do that cycle again, it would come to about $1.2 million worth of work. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson? Or Mr. Callahan?
At today's cost.
That is correct.
At today's cost. Does that include city-owned property?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we should not be including city-owned property in the mill because we're currently funding city-owned property, correct?
We are funding it through different road funds, yes.
All right, so we should need a new revenue stream for the city-owned portions because we have currently been providing those funds. So I'd like to see a calculation that considers that. The nonprofit and school issue, you know, we have to explore solutions to. Do we have any idea what percentage of sidewalk frontage that represents?
I do not, but if you want me to give you that number, I will.
I would, I would, because I want to make sure that we're talking about a number that is in the right target, and Mr. Johnson's right, we definitely want to overshoot slightly to make sure we can roll it back, because if it's not enough, then we're just, people are going to be paying a tax, and we're not actually going to be providing the service that they said they want, and we don't want to be in that situation. But I would like to know what is, what is the loss on that? When we're thinking about this number, are we incorporating the cost savings the city will yield for no longer having to bill people multiple times and pass all these, what, $30,000 over the last, $30,000 bills through Treasury over the last cycle to residents and then manage that program? There must be some cost savings there for no longer having to manage 30,000 individual property assessments. I mean, is that a reasonable, that's a reasonable assumption? There's some cost savings there.
You're asking me? I'm asking. It's a reasonable assumption that there are some cost savings, but I could not tell you how much at the moment.
And I know that about three years ago, Commissioner Forni, or sorry, now Mayor Forni, then Commissioner Forni and I, were working closely with some residents on Vincetta who were also asking about the lifting and the grinding, and we had talked about that, and we had talked about trying to pilot it, because the last time the city did experiment with those, I think as you said, was in '95, so 23 years, and maybe the methods have improved, I don't know, you're in the business more so than I, but have we pressure-tested that? Because I think your theories sound that, yeah, you could do it for half the cost, but you have to come back three times over the life of what would have been a new slab, you actually end up paying more. I think that's a sound theory, but we had talked about pressure-testing that in the city and trying to pilot it in some places, and I thought we had done that on a stretch, did we not?
We have not.
I would, so I would like to see that.
We did some pit, we tried the pitting with, filling with the latex concrete.
Right.
Which we, that was during the Vincetta timeframe in 2015, and we allowed that through the remainder of the program.
And we're monitoring those to see if that method is acceptable. So I think I would like to see us as part, I think residents, you know, myself included, the method is certainly more convenient of having a mill as opposed to the special assessment, and I think there's efficiencies to it, but I think as Commissioner LaVassar did raise, they also want to make sure that we're striving to improve this program, and I want to make sure that we're having that conversation at the same time, and if we're talking about a November ballot initiative or potentially ballot question, what's the timeframe, what's the drop date on actually landing on language and a number?
Probably early to mid-August.
Okay. So, we have some time to consider how we can both ask this question, what's the right number, make sure that we're considering all the facts with regard to if nonprofits and, and, you know, hospital systems and school systems are not paying in, how much more residents actually take on? I'd like to be able to understand that. If it's spread over time, maybe it's, maybe it's an acceptable amount, or are these other methods that we could potentially charge them, use to charge those entities, are they actually viable? I work in the nonprofit sector, and I know there's a huge movement amongst nonprofits, like trying to fight those types of methods that currently are in this legally murky So that's where I'm at, and I would like to, then maybe we need to have another discussion about our standards. I think we've clearly had this conversation over the six years of this program many, many times, that a hairline crack, if it's an indication that slab's going to fail within two, three years, that's why we replace it, and I think that's a repeated frustration of residents, because it's fine right now, and our argument is, yes, but if we have to come out in two years to spot-replace slabs, we're going to pay a lot more per slab as opposed to doing them all. I think, again, that logic is still sound, but I do think maybe we want to revisit our standards just to make sure that we are absolutely right on top of it. I know we just did that three years ago, but I think asking the question, you know, requires that we show the residents that we're doing our due diligence, and that we are doing everything within our power to make sure the program's efficient, as effective as possible. So I'm not comfortable moving forward with, you know, voting on this today. I think we'd like, I would like to get a little bit more information and make sure we have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed, and that we're, most importantly, asking for the right amount, and secondly, that voters have every confidence that whichever way people would prefer to be billed for this, we're making the program work better every, every single year.
Mr. Perusch.
I also don't have any problem delaying this in order to get that additional information. For some reason, I thought you were going to target the August election, I don't know where that came from, and I know that the deadline for that is coming up soon, but if we're targeting November, then we do have time to get a little bit more information before we actually make a decision on this. The only other thing that I would add is, there are, I think, probably a couple of other communities out there that do a little bit more fine-tuning of the types of repairs that they require, they don't, they don't replace everything. The only reason I know about one is that my husband and I go periodically to Marine City, because there's a restaurant there that we enjoy, and it's right on the river, and last fall, I saw sidewalks that had markings on, that were very similar to the markings that we put on our sidewalks when we're doing the sidewalk program. So I just went to their website and Googled, you know, Marine City Sidewalk Program, and boom, there is their sidewalk program. They also individually assess individual adjacent property owners, they do not have a millage, they do allow and encourage property owners to pay for sidewalk repairs on their own, they have to pull a permit, they have to use a licensed contractor, and my guess is that it's probably more expensive than being in the citywide program, but they, there is that option, and we have that option, too. But they also use different types of criteria for which sidewalks actually have to be replaced, and what has to be done if there's a defect in the sidewalk. If there's a hairline crack, they allow, in some situations, depending upon how big it is, to be filled as opposed to replaced completely. I don't believe they allow shaving, but they do allow lifting, at least in their current program. So if we're looking for examples of communities that use those, and we're looking for information from them as to their track record, how well it works, you know, does it really, is it really an effective program, or do you have to go back two years later and replace it anyway, you might want to look to Marine City. They're tiny compared to us in terms of the amount of sidewalks they have, but they do use a more refined, is probably the word, a more detailed program of what you do with an individual sidewalk flag if it has different types of flaws in it, and they might have some history as to how well that has been working. I don't know how long they've been doing it, but anyway, they're out there. So I guess I would like a little bit more information on that aspect of the, of the program as well. But I really think that this, this should go on the ballot just to give the voters a choice. There were some online polls in some of the social media things about, you know, how do you feel about this, how do you feel about that, and I was surprised that even in some of the more negative, negative, social media platforms, the votes were like 60/40, yeah, we've, you know, paying, not paying a tax, and I was surprised that it was that close, that there were actually people who would consider paying a tax, whether it's 5.5 mils or whatever, as opposed to having individual assessments on their property. So I really think there are people out there in the community, a substantial number of people in the community who are looking for this option, and it may not win a majority in November, which means we go back to the old system, but I really think that those voters deserve an opportunity to vote for this alternative, and we'll see what happens. But I think we need a little bit more information before we actually fine-tune it to the specific millage level, perhaps a six-year time limit on it. Anyway, so I'm in favor of taking the time to get a little bit more information, but then when it comes back, I think we ought to move forward with it and get it on the ballot in November.
Commissioner Douglas.
I appreciate Commissioner Dubb's insights on this subject, and I do see the merits in waiting until we get some more information about the points that he and Commissioner Perusch have raised, but I will point out that if, for example, we as a commission chose not to offer this alternative to the voters, it's not that we would be then funding sidewalks out of the general fund, we would still have in place the system that we currently have, which is to invoice property owners. So to me, voting for this at some future date gives people a choice, which they don't have right now. So that would be why I would support it, assuming we can answer the questions that we've raised here satisfactorily.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll just add, I think this is one of the, you know, few things that I think voters can really inform the rest of the community as far as what they want to do, how they want to pay for infrastructure. I think in this particular case, you know, as a case, I think city manager Don Johnson highlighted the pros and cons in terms of this commission, but there's also pros and cons to any individual property owner, you know, as far as if you want to pay for these individually as a property owner, or if you would rather prefer to have a millage where those expenses are smoothed over time, and we do admittedly get some efficiencies as a city to execute the sidewalk program. The other thing, too, I know it's, at least up here, I was first elected, Commissioner Dubb was first elected back the first year of the sidewalk program, I believe it was the first year, if not, it was early into the, it might have been the first year we started, and it was, I don't want to say an incredible distraction for the city commission and staff, but, you know, we treat each individual in this community when they come before us and they have an issue, they want to be heard, we want to hear them. You know, like Commissioner Dubb said, both he and I went out to the neighborhoods in Vincetta, long, long, you know, paths of sidewalks up there, those bills are very significant for people that have wide lots, that have corner lots, and understanding, you know, things that simply aren't in their control, like upheaval from trees and things of that nature, and, you know, I think in this particular case, the, you know, yeah, there's a lot of, I think there's no issue pushing this off to November, I think part of this equation is understanding, you know, what would it actually cost? I think Commissioner Dubb brought up some good points that we need to vet, so there's no hurry to do it tonight, but just to advise staff, you know, as far as my opinion and my colleagues' my opinion, I do think a six-year window is appropriate if that's the program that we have today, and that's what's been working, that's what we're staffed up to do. I think that allows us at least six years to see how it works, and if it's, you know, the voters put it into place and it becomes intolerable for whatever reason, we can choose not to renew it and go back to, you know, assessing people, so it does give a choice. It's not the end of the world, one way or the other, and I think what it does is, it really, I mean, look, there's no debate, people love our walkable community, we want to invest in our walkable infrastructure, that's never been up for debate. The question is, is who pays for it? And the answer is, we all pay for it, but the real question is, is how do we pay for it? So I'll be very interested to see where this goes, and I do think, I mean, yes, it's important that we continue to be vigilant on looking at alternative ways to keep the cost down regardless if it's assessed or if it comes in the form of the millage. I don't want to say that's a separate issue, but certainly as this topic comes up, we need to be making sure that we're looking at ways to continue to approve, you know, at every angle. There's new technology out there, there's new learnings from other communities we can garner wisdom from, so that shouldn't be, I mean, we can kind of base everything on today, and if we find these new innovations and new, better ways of doing it, and better ways of managing it, then we can always levy less of a mil, which, as city manager Don Johnson said, we've done that historically in the past with the waste millage. I mean, this commission, well, I don't know about the newcomers, but at least the...
I mean, this commission, well, I don't know about the newcomers, but at least the veterans on here, we've proven that if we're, if we're not going to use it, we don't levy it. So I think that's an important point with, with any millage that we put forward. So, all right. I'm not, I'm sensing we're not going to have any motions on the table tonight, but I could be wrong. Are there any motions, Commissioner Dubac?
Well, I guess I would move to, you know, in case it's not clear, to ask staff to bring us back some more detail with regard to, you know, potential mill rates based on, you know, some of the questions I've asked and any other information that will help inform this decision.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Dubac. Is there a second?
A spark?
Second by Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Dubac, anything more to add?
I made my comments, thanks.
Yeah, you did. Commissioner Lavassier?
I would ask staff also to address some of my questions with regard to the cost of some of the other alternatives to replacing flags outright.
Everybody agreeable within the context of the original motion? Commissioner Dubac?
I'm sorry, is that a question, ask staff to come up with 1.2 million dollars a year out of general fund and make a recommendation on what cuts they would make?
That wasn't the question I posed. It was specifically with regard to the alternative.
Like shaving.
Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you.
Shaving, grinding.
Gotcha.
Filling.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. So a motion for more information? No motion at this point to put it on the ballot. All right, item number 15, discussion of DTE and recent power outages, as requested by Mayor Fornie, Commissioner Dubac, Commissioner Lavassier, and Commissioner Macy. I suppose I should kick this one off since I was the genesis of asking my colleagues to support putting this on the agenda. Clearly, in the last number of months, we've seen significant storms hit our community, hit the broader community, hit southeast Michigan, and we've all endured the power outages that accompany those type of weather incidences. You know, however, though, in Royal Oak in the past, and from what I understand currently, we still see unexplainable outages, specifically in certain parts of our community, up near the Webster Substation area. In fact, and I will disclose, because if anyone goes to a map, they'll see my house in a small, little area of, I think, a half a city block where inexplicably, in the middle of the day, the power will go out, usually restored within hours. You know, in the past, we've had DTE come here in front of us to explain a number of different situations that impact our city. In the past, we've discussed, you know, the time it takes for their line workers to come and disconnect power so our firefighters can adequately extinguish fires and, you know, save possession and save potentially lives in our community. And we've seen improvement in that regard. We've also asked them, and I know myself, former Mayor Ellison, Mr. Johnson, I believe, was, also participated in that call a while back, where we had asked and got a commitment from DTE to make certain investments in Royal Oak. And I think it's appropriate, and I did speak to DTE last week, Mike Pachescu of their Government Affairs, and we had a very pleasant and good conversation. And they are a little busy right now, so I understand his inability to come here. But I think it was, I think it would be appropriate for us as this committee to give a little guidance through our city manager to set expectations as far as what we want to understand from DTE, so they can come here and report back to not just us, but our community as a whole, some of the things that they're doing to improve over past years, the situation related to power outages. There's a point where we reasonably expect power to go out, and we're patient, but for some of us in the community, the power outages on a random sunny day, you know, in the middle of the summer, you know, tied to potentially some substation issues, we just want to understand better. We, I mean, we all pay our rates, we're all, most of us pay them on time. We want to make sure that, you know, DTE is, you know, doing the right things to ensure, you know, that we get the power we deserve. And so, again, I know I have a reputation of being, let's just say, aggressive, to use kinder words, with DTE. But I really do want to take a more proactive approach here and make sure that they have an opportunity to come in and update this community on what they're doing, what they plan to do. And so not only will they hold themselves accountable to us, but to the public as well. Again, I want to reiterate, it's not a DTE bashing session, I promise, that's not my intent here. But we really want to make sure we take time, at least once a year, to understand what DTE is doing for such a critical service that our residents depend on for a whole myriad of reasons, so. Any other discussion? I mean, I kind of opened it up there. Any other feelings or sentiments about having DTE come in and, you know, explain what they're doing for our, for our city and for our residents that consume electricity, which I assume is all of them, except for maybe Commissioner Dubac? I'm sure he has a lot of fancy solar panels and everything on his house, but...
Soon enough.
No? Sound like a fair plan? Anything that we, any fellow colleague here would want to have our staff relay to DTE as far as information they can provide to us? Yes, Commissioner Perush?
In terms of the power outages that took place not only this year, the two that were recent this year, but also the one last year, the one in March, for which a number of our police officers received an award because of the number of calls. I know that in a number of instances, outages in the specific little blocks that you see on the outage map, you know, the yellow areas, the green areas, as opposed to the individual property owners, the little purple dots, were due to, not in all instances, but in a number of instances, were due to tree branches falling down on the lines, and the trees were not on the public right-of-way or necessarily in the DTE easement. They were just on private property. The branches happened to overhang a line, the branch came down. Inevitably, it's a silver maple tree, and it took out power for this entire section. A thousand homes, 500 homes, whatever. In our neighborhood, it tends to be about 500 homes when it goes out. So I guess I would like to understand, I know that DTE has a fairly active line easement clearance program ongoing. And they've came, come to us and detailed, you know, we're going to be in these areas, and this is how we prioritize what we do. And I know certainly there are certain things that they can do with the various lines in terms of upgrading the actual hardware of the lines themselves. But I guess I would like to understand better from them how they deal with situations, at least like the two that I'm familiar with, where a tree on private property, in both instances, it was in somebody's front lawn, happened to spew a branch and hit a line, which took out an entire neighborhood. How do they deal with that situation? Is there a program for, for surveying those kinds of trees, for looking at the lines for that situation and aggressively trimming? I guess I'd like a little bit more information about that particular aspect of line maintenance, not in the easement, outside of the easement.
Outside the easement.
Where the trees are particularly, potentially impacting a service line. Not an individual home service line, but a big, big line. That's the question I have.
Ms. Macy?
I just want to follow up on that and say I'd also like to hear about their easement program by request of the homeowner. I know you say it's been, they have a very active program. I have in my easement a tree that's been growing up through the power line, and I've contacted them five times, and over the three, last three years, to no avail. So I'm curious how, if it's not in an already designated area, homeowners can alert them and be, and have some response to problem trees.
Yeah, and I think on that, I mean, my question, I mean, aligns exactly where you guys are coming from, but at a broader level, you know, maybe breaking it down more scientifically, even looking at, okay, there are this many outages, they were caused by, you know, these types of issues, and if some of them are trees outside the easement, okay, what are we doing, you know, to manage that process, both as a city, as residents, and as DTE? And then we have some that are, you know, hey, we had, you know, a circuit blow at the substation. Okay, well, what are you doing to, you know, invest in critical infrastructure to prevent those type of outages from happening? At this point, I mean, it's very difficult to even ascertain, you know, we have to sort of add up the sum of our complaints on email or our own experiences to understand the number of outages and, let alone understand why they occurred. And I think it's helpful to have a conversation as a community with our electric provider because, you know, there are things we can do together. But if we don't have that information, if we don't have that knowledge, if we don't know how we can help as a city, or how residents can take an active role in making sure these outages occur or don't occur, you know, we're just running in the blind here. So we're, we're hoping to get a little bit more vision. So I take away from Commissioner Perush, we want to understand about trees outside the easement, what happens, if it seems to be a cause in a particular pocket or certain pockets in the city. And also, when we have these situations, when we call, like Commissioner Macy said, you know, what's, how do we know? Maybe they came out and looked, and they just never gave feedback back. But, you know, this is helpful information we can relay back to DTE because, you know, our residents are their customers as well. And if they're not, if they're doing things and not getting credit for it, okay. If they're not doing something, then they need to be held accountable, too. So. Ms. Macy?
I just want to make sure that I understood what you just said at the end, which was that we want to get the information from them on why these outages occur? Is that what you were saying? Because it would be really interesting to find out. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, look, let's just, let's be transparent about it. If it's all on their end, if it's acts of nature, and we're just so blessed with so many trees and all that, and we have to tolerate, you know, some power outage, but to me, there are certain pockets in the city that see an abnormally, you know, larger number of outages than other areas. And quite frankly, you know, when I look at the landscapes and the trees or whatever, I mean, look, you could be wrong, I'm just creating a hypothesis here, but there's something more than just, you know, erratic trees that are causing the situation, or, you know, squirrels with sharp claws or whatever else could happen that we've heard of in the past, both speculation and reality, so. Good? You guys have a clear understanding of what to communicate? And we, and we don't want to hear, okay, I'll make, I'll make the public record here, and I appreciate how DTE is very expressive and proud of the work that they do on a number of different topics, but let's limit the scope to this specific topic. And so, we're not here for 40 minutes. You know, we really just want to understand the outages that have happened in the last year or two, the trend that we're seeing, and the reason why those outages happened, and what we can do with DTE as residents and as, you know, board members up here to improve the situation. Anybody against that? Do I hear any dissent? Okay, good. All right. I appreciate that discussion. It was electric.
Oh, my God.
Dad jokes are on sale, if anyone wishes to purchase them. Randy, you take the cake on that one. All right. Well, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Unless there's anything else for the benefit of our fine community, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Lavassier?
So moved. To adjourn.
To adjourn. We have a commission, we have a motion by Commissioner Lavassier to adjourn, seconded in by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right. With none, I'll call for the vote. Nonwill call. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned.